I went ahead, you can definitely go ahead and start live streaming in one minute.
Thanks Shanita, as a reminder, everyone, we're right at 12:59. We're waiting for more of our commissioners to join the line. We do have our Chair and Commissioner Fauchekio in the Executive Director's Conference Room. So give us about a minute or two for our Chair to get ready and for other Commissioners to join, and we'll be getting started shortly. Thank you. Again, if you don't mind, to just put your devices on mute if you're not speaking. Thanks.
I can't even hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you Commissioner, no one is speaking right now. I think Shanita's talking to someone else, she's on mute.
Good afternoon. Would you like to start the meeting to order? My name is Dionne Bussi-Reader, the Chairperson of the DC Housing Authority Board of Commissions. First order of business. Let me first begin by saying we are actually being taped on live, and I will ask everyone who's not speaking to please mute your line and wait until you're called upon to ask any questions. First order of business is the approval of our minutes from the November 10th, 2021 Board of Commissioners Meeting.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, can I do a roll call to determine?
I'm sorry, I thought we'd already done it, please forgive me, go right ahead.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Present.
Commissioner Council?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman? Commissioner Talafaro? Commissioner Ortiz-Gowd? Commissioner Von Gossary? Commissioner Von Gossary, I believe you're on mute. I'll circle that. Commissioner Spohr?
Present.
Skinner?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Von Gossary, are you able to respond, present? Commissioner Hoffman? You're muted.
Here.
Thank you. And Chairman Bussi-Reader?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have eight Commissioners present, you have a quorum.
Thank you Alethea. First order of business is approval of the minutes for November 10th, 2021 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah, I would point out that starting on page 11 and through approximately page 44, Commissioner Donald is the person speaking, but she's identified as Ms. Powell. That needs to be corrected.
Okay. Director Donald, names need to be replaced. Any other? Any other questions regarding the minutes? Comments, changes? Hearing none, I will entertain a vote to accept the minutes with the changes.
Just the motion and second?
Motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Okay. Motion's approved and accepted. Next order of business is the Executive Director's Report. Director Donald, proceed.
Can I get a question before this?
Sure.
So earlier we tried to discuss this, and I think it's important to clearly hear a little bit, starting the eligibility of the three Resident Commissioners as well as the Chair. There's been some opinions out of the Attorney General's office, there's been some articles in the newspaper. I think in terms of transparency, it's just really important to hear from our General Counsel as to how these things have been received and why all the people that are eligible today are deemed so.
Certainly. Good afternoon to the public and to the Commissioners. With respect to this, some of you may be aware, there was an opinion of the Attorney General that was issued yesterday regarding the terms of the Resident Election of the Resident Commissioners. The Attorney General has given us advice that those terms extend. And so we've accepted that advice, reviewed it, and also provided that information to the Board of Commissioners.
Same with the, as a result?
As a result, those Commissioners are back on the board as their terms extend until the next election, which is planned for, there was council legislation that those elections, which we already planned, will happen not later than March 31st, 2022. So each of the Resident Commissioners is on the Board of Commissioners. And we've accepted that advice, and I've given that advice to the Board of Commissioners.
And with regards to the other opinion from the Attorney General?
So that opinion is just a general opinion?
This is crazy.
With respect to their read of the statute. So that is not specific to anyone in particular. So if there's a question that the Board has about any status, the Board would need to review and review any potential steps forward.
So I just want to put on the record that on, just getting my notes here, on November 9th, on November 29th, I asked these very questions of you with regards to a specific Board Member, with regards to what the Attorney General is opining on, and you never responded. And you never gave us an opinion on questions that were asked, these very questions that the Board asked of our General Counsel. And now we have an opinion from the Attorney General that would suggest that the Chair is ineligible to serve. I just, there's so much swirl around this agency right now. I just want us to address this.
Please Commissioner Fauchekio, and then I'll follow up.
So as related to that?
I'm asking the General Counsel for, I get that we want to jump to there.
She responded. She responded Commissioner Slaver.
She responded that, that what?
Well, my recollection of this on the first matter of the Resident Commissioners was that, that what happened in our conversation in November amongst the Board was that we were giving guidance that, that we could update our bylaws or we can extend them. Then it was kind of some back and forth, and there was a sense that there should be council action to give a certainty within, with the Resident Commissioners remaining until there was an election. And then, you know, there's this guidance from the Office of the Attorney General that, that wasn't in fact necessary, so then the Council didn't want to act. So I think that it, and I know that there were emails in the meantime where the General Counsel was giving us guidance and keeping us abreast as that guidance was being developed and as different stakeholders were being heard from. The Council decided not to act. That's their prerogative. That would have been another, you know, another affirmation that the Resident Commissioners could stay on. But that was not, that was something that I think some of the Board Members actually kind of alluded to that would give them more comfort level. So it seems like all of this kind of took some twists and turns, but the General Counsel had said that we didn't need council action, or Commissioners pushed on whether we did. Then we go through the work of proposing council action, and then an opinion from the Attorney General, based on what the Council asked for of them, says that they probably didn't have to act. So we can talk about opinions, and opinions are going to be based on the fact, but it seems like we arrived back at what the General Counsel of the Housing Authority initially told us.
And I would just add that we did get the Council, the opinion of the Office of Attorney General, and they relied on something they had issued many, many years ago. But it comes to the conclusion, so they relied on some 1966 opinion of the Corporation Council. So, you know, that's how they got there, and so we accept that as they have interpreted what they have issued in the past.
I'm not sure anybody's, I think we're in clarity on the Resident Commissioners. It was a back and forth and a back and forth, and the Attorney General came out with an opinion. It was, there were two opinions in his opinion. We're accepting one, but not the other.
Well, that's not, that's where I'm arguing with you Commissioner Slaver, is we actually had an opinion from our General Counsel, which then we updated to get more comfort by having the Council actually take an affirmative action. The Council decided not to take that based on an opinion of the Attorney General. But that still doesn't mean that the opinion that we got from the Office of the General Counsel allegedly. So what I would say on the second matter is, the Office of the Attorney General issued the second opinion, I think without much consultation from the agency, and not having all the facts issued in the opinion, which I know they're still reviewing. So.
Who's still reviewing it?
The Attorney General. So they had no information. This was a general opinion. And so based on that general opinion, that is why I'm saying per the statute, if there's an action that the Board chooses to take, it can, but that, the opinion that they rendered was not specific.
So.
And it was requested by, that it was requested by the Council.
Ms. Powell, on November 29th, I asked you very question, and you have not yet responded. So what is your opinion on this?
I did respond earlier, and I said that these, I told you the process that we had gone through to confirm with the city, the process they had taken.
My question to you remains the same, which is, what is your opinion with regards to the ability to sit on the booth while owing taxes?
Yeah, we would say take the same steps. These are things that are determined by the eligibility, by the district. So that is what that's determined. I would say.
The Attorney General has determined.
They have not reviewed the specific matter at all, and that's what they have told us. So.
Your position, I just want to, what I opened by saying was, I'd like to get the General Counsel, and what I need, what I'd like to hear you say is that you, as our General Counsel, at this moment in time, feel that a Commissioner who owes taxes, as has been reported out in the newspaper, is eligible to serve on the Board?
What I've stated is that is a determination by the district, and that is a determination that only can be made by the district. They determine eligibility, and they make the nominations, and then.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we determine the eligibility, this Board determines the eligibility. So what I'm asking you is our General Counsel. And I said this in emails earlier, when I went back and forth to you, but got no response. I'm asking you, what is your opinion? It's our job.
It is, it is, it is not, but what, the only thing that we are able to do is confirm what the district does. And so there is, we will make the request to the Attorney General.
Our bylaws, our bylaws are very clear on this matter. It says very.
We do not determine eligibility as DCHAJ. And if there's a question after someone has been accepted and approved by the Council, then the Board can take action.
But that's what I was asking you to affirm on the 29th, and you didn't, you did not respond. You did not respond to my question on this very matter. You did not provide the Board the response to the question I asked. So you're non-responsive.
I responded earlier, and I will respond again, and we now have.
What you said was, I'll respond to you, but you never did. I asked you for an opinion.
We are not able to give an opinion on something that is in the purview of the district, but we will respond, I'll respond.
I'm not, I'm not understanding that, because we have bylaws, we have a forward procedure process. This is part of that process. We just went through Commissioner Talafaro. It's actually written in our procedure, this very issue is something we can act on.
Then you would need to act on that. And then you're in that process, but you determine it in the process.
But you, you know that our process requires you to provide that to us so that we can act on it.
No, it's in the process that you determine that. I don't, we don't have not any information about anyone's situation. So if you believe that that's what needs to happen, it's the Board, then you all tend to take that action.
If I could say though, Mr. Commissioner Slaver, the interim General Counsel did respond to your November 29th email request about that, and she did opine on that specifically to your question about the tax issue. You were asking about it in Washington Post article, and.
Right, and I responded, and I said, I appreciate the response, but I'd like a formal memo addressing this issue. The response you provided was a general response to the position of others asking for yours.
But that is, that is, that is legal.
That is the legal response.
That is the response.
That is the response Commissioner Slaver.
So then why did you respond, why did you respond and say you'll provide a response?
We did. I have given a response on, yes, and I can listen.
On December 3rd, when you responded to my last email and said, I will provide you a response, you weren't intending to.
That's for a formal opinion, and my formal opinion is going to say, see my previous. So that's, that's what I would say.
Well, I didn't get that, so.
Well, she will send it, she'll resend it to you again now, sir. Any other questions before we go to the Executive Director's Report?
Let me, let me read part of this, okay? "Based on a confirmation from the Executive Office of the Mayor, the District considers a person to be in compliance with taxes if the person is current on a payment plan. We've been advised that Commissioner Bussi-Reader did disclose her tax situation during the appointment process. Based on my conversation with the Mayor's Council, it is my understanding that Commissioner Bussi-Reader has a payment plan in place with the District. The Mayor's Council noted the standard of compliance with taxes is set forth in various DC statutes. For example, the DC Procurement Practices Act for Approval of Contracts Over a Million provides contractors remain eligible for contracts with the District if they have a payment plan with the District. Then we go through the DCHA Act that provides, no Commissioner shall have any past due taxes, special assessments, or other charges owing to the District. Failure to timely pay any such amounts due or to be paid overdue taxes, assessments, or other district charges after demand therefore, and after final determination pursuant to the applicable grievance or other procedure, which shall include notice of the charges against the elected Commissioner, and an opportunity to be heard in person or by Council in his defense shall be caused, or Commissioner's removal. We've been advised that the District must first demand payment, and then a Commissioner could then avail themselves of whatever appeals process the District has concerning taxes. As noted above, the District considered making payments under a payment plan compliance. If the District determines that the Commissioner is out of compliance and the demand and appeals process takes place, then the Board could decide to initiate the disciplinary process. However, it's my understanding the District considers Commissioner Bussi-Reader as eligible for the Board of Commissioners."
Thank you Andrea. Thank you Commissioner Slaver.
Long for, for reading our emails into the public record.
Thank you Commissioner Slaver. Call to order. That's the end of that. Thank you. She answered your question. We're moving forward to the Executive Director's Report. I appreciate you. Thank you. Director Donald, please provide your report.
I guess I handled that.
Pull up a deck, and I will walk through this quickly since we have a lot of business in here. So my report primarily focuses on a timely matter, which is the Resident Commissioners' Elections. Clearly, we've had an update since I prepared this report, but the bottom line is that we are, the Board of Commissioners, the elections for the Resident Commissioners should have been scheduled for, to conclude by the fall of 2021. Due to COVID, the Resident Council Elections were delayed, I'm sorry, the Resident Council Elections were delayed by one year until September 2021. The previous DCHA leaders believed that then they could move the Resident Council Commissioners' Election forward one year, not realizing that that would result in the expiration of their terms. So where are we now? We are moving forward with a very comprehensive, fair, and legal election process that we will, we plan to conclude in March. We have already started that. We have an independent third-party monitor who was already on board, Resident Participation Services. We no longer need emergency legislation at the Council, we've already discussed that. The, just to remind people and inform others, HUD requires that we have at least one Resident Council Commissioner on our Board. The District of Columbia has three, and we believe that is a good thing, and we want to remain in good standing and meet the intent of our own mission. So residents, the process is very detailed. There's a 30-day written notice of the nomination period. That day, the 30-day process starts today. The notice includes a description of the election procedures, eligibility requirements, and other dates. There is then a campaign period of another 30 days. And then we go forward with the whole process. We have briefed the Resident Council Presidents and the Resident Council Presidents Advisory Meeting, our monthly meeting, that was last week. We also briefed the Advocates so that we're making sure that this information is available widely and publicly. Primarily, there's one new element, it's actually not new, go to the next slide, but it had not been adhered to in previous elections, but it is required by Board Resolution that at-large candidates must collect 300 signatures. No more than 60 can be from one property. And senior and family candidates must collect 200 signatures. No more than 40 can come from one property. For some reason, the authority had not required this in the last few elections, but it's law by Board Action, and so we will be adhering to that. The election process, again, has a number of states, election dates, polling sites, notices for each of the 40 properties, information meetings for each property, and as I said earlier, a 30-day nomination period. It also includes candidate training, the 30-day campaign period on the next slide, candidate forum, hiring residents as poll workers, and then two days to hold the election. So all of this will take, next slide, 90 days if all goes well. And we are meeting with the monitor and staff to ensure that all of the steps that we laid out in a calendar are met.
Questions?
Yes.
Why were these elections not held at the same time as the Resident Council Officer Elections?
I've asked that same question. The previous administration did not plan for that.
I can answer that. I can answer that. This Commissioner Von Gossary, if you read our bylaws, we, the Resident Council Election must take place before the Commissioner Election. I also want to inject for the record, and please let the record reflect, that Andrea, I would like for you to send every Commissioner, when, as the Chair of the Resident Service Resident Initiative Committee, the leadership came forth, and it was during COVID-19, under the Trump's administration. I had advocated very strongly that we move forward with our election because we would end up where we are today. But my understanding, Commissioner Talafaro and Commissioner Council, well along with the citywide leadership, and each leader had a reason why we should not have had a Resident Council Election during COVID-19. I was, I was told that the Trump Administration informed the Housing Authority that they could push back the Resident Election up until this point, and they have up until December the 23rd. As a Resident Commissioner, contrary to whatever any of you believe, I like to get facts straight on the record. And as the Chair of the Resident Service Resident Initiative Committee, there are minutes. Those minutes should be forwarded to all of the elected, newly-elect Resident Councils, so we will no longer have miscommunication as we move forward. So it was a unanimous vote by the leadership, not the Board of Commissioners, not the Director, nor was it the Chair of our Board. It was our resident leadership, and each of them gave a reason why. Now we can move forward.
That's the Resident Council Presidents voted to delay their election?
That's correct, based on COVID-19. Alethea, as a matter of fact, I asked Alethea to find the minutes and send those minutes to you, along with the tape, because our meetings are taped. And if you hear the tape and read the minutes, we will no longer have this type of controversy because all of our minutes are now being taped. So you can hear the tape, and you can see the minutes. It was based on the resident leadership. In return, Commissioner Council, who is, who was then and is now as the Vice Chair, is on record stating that if the Resident, if the Resident Election, Resident Election is pushed back for a year, he stated, then that would mean that the Resident Commissioners' Election will be pushed back for a year. At that time, Neil Albert was our Chair, and he made no correction, and we moved forward based on documentation from the former President informing them that they were in compliance and could have their election one year later, and this is where we at. So I don't think that we should no longer argue on that because the Commissioner Hoffman, what we really need, what you all really need, because this is my last election during 16 years, is the minutes. And then I think this should be-
I didn't agree to that.
No, you didn't agree that they move forward. That's not what I said. I, I said that Commissioner Council stated that if the resident councils have their election, stated and based on the correspondence that we were told, that was sent from HUD, signed by your President Trump, who stated that the election, they had up until December to have that election. You said-
I still ain't agree to that.
That's correct.
We had no proof.
Right. No, listen to what I just said.
I said nothing. I don't even know what you're talking about.
Oh, well, get the minutes, because Commissioner Council did say, if that did come to place, that the commissioners' election would then be pushed back a year. That's in the-
Never discussed.
Get the minutes and send it to them, Alethea, and it's no debate. And make sure that the attendance at the meeting get it too. As a matter of fact, have an open meeting about it, and let the tape play, and let the minutes.
I didn't agree to that. I didn't agree to it. I don't find it.
Did anyone research the legality of delaying the resident commissioners' election for a year at the time Commissioner Council decided to delay it for a year?
Commissioner, well, based on our laws, you have to have the resident council election before you can have a commissioner election. Their election have to go first, then the commissioners' election.
So, just adding another question to this. When did the agency become aware that this was going to be a problem?
I brought that, I don't know. I, I informed the board soon as I found out and was informed by our general counsel, and that's when we came to the board. Initially, we thought the cure would be to change the bylaws, but it was within, within a week or so that I was informed of that. And we tried to review to see what, what possible remedies that would be, and then we brought to the board, so.
You had no prior knowledge of it?
No.
Before that? And that was a month, six weeks ago?
Yes, approximately.
Six weeks ago?
Yes, way too late to have put the election in place for, in time.
Who is the same independent monitor handling this election that handled the resident council election?
Unfortunately.
But the separate procurement, so that was an RFP issued, and they won the RFP. I have no thought, sort of, no cut. They just went through the RFP process, I don't know.
But, and, you say the director, we haven't had any issues with the election monitor before?
We only had to delay the vote by a week because they hadn't reserved sufficient voting locations, which would put us after the council deadline.
That was-
No, that was-
That was for the resident, the resident elections. This process is even-
They were delayed by a week because there wasn't sufficient voting places arranged.
Some, some resident leaders complained that there wasn't adequate notice, and so we extended it for a week, but this-
Right, so if we extend this for a week-
We're not going to extend this one.
Since they monitored, we are over the council's deadline.
Okay, so it's-
It's 90 days if everything goes fine.
No, I've laid out a timeline. First of all, I didn't manage that last process that was already in place before I got here.
You're correct.
We are, we have, we have this process. We've met with the monitors. We've laid out a calendar. We have made sure that our staff does what they need to do in terms of getting information out. Our timeline, we will meet the city council's date. We were, our timeline is laid out in a way to get there even sooner. So that's, this will be managed. The other one, Mike.
Yes, your final statement to us in your report is, bottom line, election process will take 90 days if all goes well.
Correct, and that would be March the 7th. The city council legislation just passed yesterday allows us until March 31st. So there's more than enough room built into the process. More than enough. I'm happy to give regular reports to the board or anyone else on each step of the way to make sure that we are meeting the deadlines or if there's any slippage.
But, well, like, not, not, not to be a pain, but based on what we went through earlier, there is no deadline by the council because according to everybody on this phone, that there's a holdover period until the next election. So what is the deadline you're talking about?
The council gave us until March 31st to complete the elections.
The council did pass emergency legislation yesterday that was revised from what they initially were, were speaking. Sorry, for the court reporter, this is Rachel Joseph. I'm the chief operating officer here at the Housing Authority. The council did pass emergency legislation yesterday that gave, that ordered the Housing Authority to have the election by March 31st.
Based on what authority?
The DC Council's authority.
We laid out a process that will get us there well before then.
But, what the commissioners arguing is that we don't have to adhere to their death-
Correct. If the, if the, if the interpretation of the language is that they hold over until the next election, that's the language. Like reading these, you're taking it, you're interpreting these, these opinions and taking what you want out of them and leaving what you don't. And so-
When this election process-
The opinion from the attorney general is they hold over until the next election.
Okay, well, we've already initiated the next election, and I've laid out a process that will get us there in approximately 90 days. We're managing the process. Resident leaders have been informed. Information has been posted. The process is, is starting today. I will give you updates along the way. I have some quick updates from the Office of Capital Programming on some projects of interest. The, we have an RFP out, a solicitation for Construction Project Management Services. One reason we will need a board meeting in January. Those proposals are in, and we'll be making recommendations to the board. This is part of the augmentation of the Office of Capital Program so that they can move forward or move, and move quickly on the $50 million capital spending plus all of our other capital and rehabilitation projects. For Langston Terrace, we don't often talk about Langston Terrace. We do have an RFP out for master planning that will be coming to the board in January. We are, this is for a master plan architect and landscape architect team for this historic site. We have 17 respondents, eight of those are CBEs, and we have four in the best and finals. And then for Capra Senior, this is the senior building that was burnt out and rebuilt. We are in the process of, of negotiating for DCHA to reacquire that building at a very modest price. We'll be coming back to the board for approval in January. In addition, we have more LRSP projects under the Department of Housing and Community Development. I would propose to also brief the board on the whole capital project when we come back in January.
Is this a time for questions on those items or no?
I don't have a lot of details on those because these are primarily about proposals that will be coming forward that we, where we will be briefing the board on, but if you have some general questions, we do have OCP on. So we'll see what we can respond to.
My question is, we approved a very large RFP for architectural and design teams so that we wouldn't have to do individual RFPs for every project. One is, not under that master RFP that we approved.
Great question, and I will turn to, I'm not sure if it's OCP or General Counsel or-
Lori.
Or Lori Vaughn.
Is John on, John or John at Ford?
This is John Strickland. Let us hold that, but we'll get back to you. We'll make sure that the staff, we'll send that out to staff so that I have a correct answer on that. They may not be on for this.
Can I ask one question about this January meeting? You're looking for one, two, three, four approvals? So those would be resolutions, correct?
Yes.
So, and the meeting's January 12?
Yes.
And but you don't have any information right now? Is there a dev mod, are there appropriate committee meetings? Then we'll be able to review all this stuff prior to that? Because it's, again, we normally don't have a meeting.
Right.
So I want to make sure there's enough opportunity to get this information. It looks like it's pretty relevant.
I believe there's an operations committee meeting that is on the calendar that may need to move because it's right during the holidays, but I don't know if the, we, the chair's made a decision on that yet.
I'm just saying it's a pretty compressed timeline, given the time of year and the depth of what I'm looking at on that screen. Buying a building for $70,000 looks a little interesting. And this Construction Project Management Services, I assume is the beefing up of the OCP?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's that $2-plus million that was set aside as part of the 50?
Yeah, not $2 million for this particular contract. Part of the $2 million was for staff. This is a portion of that for the contract, yes. But it is under that, that it, you're, you are referring to the right item.
Yeah, because it says, looks, it looks, it says right here, expand OCP staff capacity. So this is pretty heady stuff, so I just want to make sure we have an opportunity to review it and ask questions.
Yes, and if we, we will provide information in writing ahead of time. And if we're not able to schedule a, either dev mod or operations before then, then we'll have to push it. So I'm committed to not coming to the board without adequate advance notice and materials in advance and opportunity for briefing, and I will adhere to that commitment. So we'll, we'll come back to you about the calendaring. Okay.
And then just another point on the Construction Management Project Services RFP. I guess this would relate to the whole $50 million, but if consideration can be given as you do that solicitation that we passed a resolution some time ago that 50% of all locally funded initiatives are reserved for CBE participants. So just wanted to put that on the record. And again, it, it would be for the overall resource, but just the board has taken a position that when local dollars are being utilized, that 50% of them be reserved for CBE participation.
And we do have three CBE respondents, so it's good. Okay. Quick updates on a couple of projects. Berry Farm Infrastructure is ongoing. As you know, we are moving forward. Hoping the board will approve the vouchers, but we also will, are moving towards closing for that building 1B, and that will be coming up soon as well. Park Morton, we're in the process of abatement and cutting and capping off utilities and to begin starting that first phase of infrastructure. Kinnaworth Courts, we are still hoping to close in December. It's not likely to be December 15th, but we're hoping that we'll be able to close before the end of the year. For Judiciary House, we're in Phase 2. It's 27 units being rehabilitated. It started at the beginning of the month and will be completed in May, but there's ongoing. And then the other half of the building will be a RAD conversion, and that's planned for late 2022. And then Potomac Gardens, RAD conversion planned for late 2022, early 2023. Just quickly to head on some employee events, we did do our second day of service with Thanksgiving meal distribution at our senior sites. You can see a few pictures there. And we proudly graduated over 30 participants in the apprenticeship training program. We hired one full-time on board here at DCHA, and others are being matched up with opportunities through other providers. The, now you went to FES. We have, our annual gift of love toy distribution is next week, and we've shared information, I believe, with the board, if not about the different sites. We will, if anyone wants to come and participate, we have a partner, wider- wider, wider circle that actually collects and provides all the gifts. So it's, we have great partnership with them. And in January, we're going to have a Coke giveaway. Lots of resident engagement this month. The Elvins Road and the Villager meetings occurred on November 9th. That was to give them a heads up about the upcoming RAD work there. Greenleaf Gardens meeting, we had on November the 10th, a large meeting. We also met with Montana Terrace and Lincoln Road regarding, and Ontario Road regarding Melvo, and Judiciary House residents meeting on November 17th. These are meetings that I personally participate in. Most of them are virtual. Judiciary Road, I mean Judiciary House was in person. And then coming up, which we actually just had, December 4th, Potomac Gardens Family Resident Council Meeting. We had about 40 or so residents there. I think Commissioner Van Gogh Street was quite well attended.
And so did the seniors. The majority of the residents that attended the, I believe the flyer stated, meet and greet the director. The majority of the residents present were the seniors.
And that means that's the second time I've met with them in person. And then we had virtual meeting with Lincoln Heights Richardson Dwellings, which Ms. Malloy will probably share some highlights or lowlights from that meeting. And then Langston Terrace is this evening to give them an update on the lead abatement and master planning work. And that, that's towards, that's just a picture from Judiciary House. We had a large outdoor town hall meeting hosted by Wynn at Benning Terrace on November 6. We had about, there were about 100 people from multiple sites that came out there. We got a nice, I've got nice coverage in the Washington Post. And then finally, we always have partnerships with our sister agencies. The Office of Veterans Affairs, DC Open Doors, and then the, a program that we run, the Credit Builder's Alliance, did a little mini documentary. I will also say that State DC has reopened for us to continue matching up our residents for those who have not completed or submitted their applications for a limited period, and we've, we're doing more onsite outreach for that. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for the executive director regarding her report? Yes, Commissioner Hoffman?
Now that all the Melvo residents have been briefed on what the plans are for Melvo, can the commissioners please be briefed? Or I prefer something in writing as to what the schedule is for the relocation and the work at each of the sites?
Yes, we will submit follow-up, and then you let us know if you want a briefing and follow-up in writing and, yeah.
By the end of next week?
Yes.
Any other questions? And if I can remind you all to please announce who you are. Any other questions, and if I can remind you all to please announce who you are for our court synographer. So, any other questions about board members? All right, hearing, now we're going to move to the resolutions. You ready?
Andre, pulling up the deck.
Madam Chair, there are two individuals that signed up to speak on the resolutions.
Okay.
We usually have their testimony first and then go into the overview.
Thank you. Thank you, Alithia. Please announce.
The first person that signed up is Belinda Belk. Appears that she's a resident. I have five minutes. Belinda Belk, are you there?
She's on the screen.
Are you able to unmute? Carla or Shanita, can you unmute her? If she doesn't, if she's unable?
Ms. Belk, if you are on a cellphone, if you could just hit star 69, so you can unmute yourself.
While she's trying, the next person is Linda Brown that signed up to speak on the resolutions.
Am I unmuted now?
Belk is unmuted. Yes. Yes, Ms. Belk, you have five minutes.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. Ms. Donaldson, I have been trying to reach out to you, and I guess I keep giving your email address wrong. So is there any possible way I can get your correct email address? Because I would like you to come to our property as well.
I would be happy for you to come, for me to come out and meet with you, and I apologize. I've been trying to reach out to you as well. So I think most people know, my name is just Donald. It's not Donalds or Donaldson or McDonald's. That's the problem.
That's what it was. I've been saying Donaldson.
BDonald, at DC Housing dot org. BDonald, B-O-N-A-L-D, at DC Housing dot org.
I'm sorry, your Donald is D-O-N-L-D?
D-O-N-A-L-D. B as in boy, D-O-N-A-L-D.
Ms. Belk, was that your only testimony? Did you have anything else you wanted to share? Ms. Belk? Thank you, Ms. Belk. Alithia, the next resident?
The next resident that signed up for the resolution is Linda Brown.
Brown, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Linda Brown. And I'm, I was actually calling about what we were speaking about earlier when we first started the meeting, about the legitimacy of the board in terms of the, you know, their terms. And I think one of the things is that it has just made it more confusing. Because we really didn't get an answer of whether or not, when you vote on the resolution, will it count? So I'm still not clear on that. I don't think I got a clear understanding about that. So could you kind of elaborate a little bit more on that? Because I don't have an understanding of that. So my concern is whether or not, when you vote, will it be legitimate?
Is she asking that question?
Yes, it will. There, there will be a legitimate election process that, that meets the law and all of the rules. And it will be legitimate. It's validated. They count the votes. So yes.
Okay, so the representative, those who represent the residents, vote will count in whatever that resolution is. Is that correct?
It's, it's not a resolution. It'll be an actual election.
I think she's talking about something different, Director Donald.
Oh.
I'm actually talking about when you vote today, will it count? When we're voting on this resolution, will they actually, will the commissioners that represent the residents, where they vote count?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification. Yes, their votes do count. They are considered to be reseated or they are officially serving on the board now until that election in March.
So just to further clarify, every resident, every board member commissioner that's on is actually eligible to vote today. All of the resident council commissioners have been reinstated until the election in March.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Could, could you clarify that statement? We keep saying they're reinstated, but if you dissect the path of what, what transpired, one could conclude they were never actually unseated.
That's correct, sir. That's fine, Commissioner Slover. I think the point that we wanted to reach is that they are able to vote today. That was the first.
Well, it matters, Chair, because we had some elections, we had some votes when there was a moment in time where we thought they weren't eligible in October. So you were asking for retroactive approval to October 1st. So I do think it matters to get on, to sort of use the correct terminology and suggesting they've been reinstated. Because in, technically, they were never off the board. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Did Ms. Brown have further questions or comments?
No, um, that question, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that was, that was, that cleared that up. So I just wanted to make sure as we're voting today on things that we're voting on, that the count, I mean, the commissioner that represents the residents, their vote would actually count and matter in this process. Okay.
Thank you. Alithia, are there any other?
Madam Chair, not the signed up to speak specifically on resolution.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair and members of the board, we're bringing forth Resolution 21-20. The purpose of that resolution is to approve the, for DCHA operate, to approve DCHA operating subsidies for FY22 under the Local Rent Supplement Program for 33 vouchers for a new 108-unit senior building under Berry Farm. That is the request before the board. Are there any questions or discussion?
I have some questions. And they're going to be quick, and I hope no one interrupts me because I was not at the October meeting. And I would like to leave out with my seniority, and it's about Berry Farms and this resolution. The first question is whether or not it's a mixed-income community. That's a yes or no answer. No one know. Can anybody hear me?
Farm is a mixed community, yes.
Did you just say yes?
Yes. He says, yes or no question. The answer is yes.
Okay, now that it was a, a mix, we got that clear. So now, through this, was the land use regulation and tax exempt finance, that's a yes or no answer?
Can you repeat that?
Okay. In brown bag, commissioners, the new commissioner informed me to look up New York. So I let Andre know that I would be asking him some questions in reference to Berry Farm so that it could go on record. I will only have two more board meetings to reach my goals. So I would have thought that he would be prepared to answer these questions. And the questions are very easy, because if it's a mixed-income community, and I'm looking at New York City, and I'm looking at, and I looked at what we getting ready to do today. So it's either, if it's mixed-income housing, then there were some elements with it. That elements had to been land use regulations, tax-exempt financing. So the answer would have been yes. Now furthermore, to go further than that, being that we have these vouchers, and you're speaking of only having the senior building built first, the question I asked him in closed bag was whether or not these vouchers was going to be people from the waiting list? Whether or not they was going to be vouchers where a resident from Berry Farms, a Berry, Berry Farm, they have a voucher? Now remember, we talking about one bedroom. So now, I could have a kid, and we were somewhere in a three-bedroom. I decided that I want to move to the one bedroom and allow my kid to go to a two, to another two-bedroom unit. Will that, or will it not impact them? Who's going to get these 33 vouchers?
These vouchers are all for Berry Farm residents who have been relocated and who have a right to return. There is a process for determining who gets what voucher and the, and the timing of that. If you want us to go through that, is, are you showing?
And how would the board be assured that when the relocation of these 33 vouchers, because you, you, you act like these are 33 vouchers that you getting ready to issue out to someone? Not the 33 vouchers that a resident from Berry Farm already have the voucher. And as you know, I have a lot of issues with that because, and I want the record to reflect that I was really upset that none of the residents of Berry Farms were actually given the right, that while they was living in deplorable conditions, that they paid their rent to DC Superior Court. So by the 12 years all of this happened, they would have walked out the door with a voucher and some interest. Therefore, we do not want to violate their rights as they move back into their location. Someone needed to see whether or not any of the elements have changed with them moving back in and starting with their seniors. Who's going to track and make sure that these seniors are Berry Farm seniors and not a senior coming off the waiting list?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Commissioner, we have a process to track anyone who was a resident as of 2012. And Berry Farm has a right to return. We have a tracking process. We know where residents have been relocated, whether it was with a voucher or onto other public housing properties. We report on that every month. I believe it is in, on the scorecard, but if not, we do have that information through our Ecod Division of Housing Choice Voucher Program, who is responsible for relocation and responsible for the processes for matching people up with their right to return.
And I sincerely recommend, Director Donald, I mean, your leadership as you move forward with Berry Farm, I think that you need to put together a group of attorneys to see whether or not statutory, regulatory, or contractual agreements are not in violation as they move forward. Because those are three elements of mixed-income housing.
Yes, Commissioner. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There any other questions on Berry Farm?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah. What has the developer contributed to the project to date in terms of money?
I don't know if anyone.
Does anybody know?
Somebody does know, Commissioner. I don't, I will look to see if someone from OCP is here, of course.
Andre, can you answer that, please?
The focus for today's meeting is about the, receiving the vouchers. So we might not have all of the information of the entire project, but I'm Vic Gould is here to see if you can answer that question.
Thank you, Director. To date, most of this project has been financed with pre-development funding through DEMPET. They provide pre-development funding for all farms to date.
So the developer has not put any money in yet?
They've put in sweat equity, and they've, have staff working on the project, correct?
Right. Who paid for the demolition?
The demolition is being funded through pre-development funds from the district.
From?
The district, through new, new communities funding.
Okay. Why do we know that we need project-based vouchers now?
We're expecting to move forward with a closing for the senior building next year. And we're trying to get all of the financing together. And this is part of the stack as far as subsidy, the new communities LRSP needs to go to council for approval. This is just one step in moving the project forward.
Well, and we can't wait to do these until the whole financing picture is clear?
It's beneficial to, to do it now so that we can get, it's part of the council sessions early next year. It's going to take some time to get it approved.
And as I read the information that was provided, this will use up all of the PBVs that are available under the NCI, New Communities Project Program. Am I correct?
That's correct. There was a, about 1.8 million dollars that was set aside in 2019. Two projects, Providence Place and Strand, are expected to come online early next year, end of this year. And this, this project will use up the remaining amount of that allocation.
So how are we going to deal with the other buildings of Berry Farm, Park Morton? Just will do without?
It'll be another budget cycle. It'll, it'll happen as those projects are ready to go. We'll work with the district to get that as part of the budget cycle.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Question. Has the development, so it sounds like Berry Farm is now, or maybe always was going to be done in phases?
That's correct.
So has the development entity that's going to own what we're calling Building 1B, has that been formed?
A developer would own the physical structure. DCHA would continue to own the land as, through Grandly.
So I'm, I'm asking, has the development entity that's going to own Building 1B been formally formed?
Yes.
It exists today?
Yes.
And DCHA is not a party to that entity?
That is correct.
We are strictly the owner of the land, and it's in a lease, and the disposition is through a lease?
That's correct.
Now, has there been an approved demo dispo for the Berry Farm property, approved by this board?
It's been a demolition approval. We'll come back to the board to get your approval on the disposition to the entity that we're talking about. And we'll have the full financial stack at that, at that meeting.
So at this point in time, 13 years into the project, the board has not approved the, the, the main trigger to getting a project started, which is a demo dispo. Is it, has the HUD approved the demo dispo application?
The demo dispo has been approved, but per 1901 Resolution, 1901, the board approves each fin- the board approves each financing, uh, stage of a project.
So the demo dispo is approved?
Correct.
So, and who owned, who owned, who controls the land today?
DCHA.
So we demo dispoed it to our cell? And now we're, each time there's a phase, we transfer the land through lease by phase?
Correct.
So what's the value of the lease for Phase One B?
We'll pr- present that information, um, when we bring the full financial package to you.
So when you applied for HUD, for the demo dispo on January twentieth of twenty seventeen, you applied a value to the ground lease. Do you recall that, what that was?
We presented an appraisal, uh, to, uh, HUD for the value of Berry Farm.
Do you remember what it was?
I don't have that exact amount. I can get it.
Sixteen point six million. So is it my understanding that this is the deal that was, that we, we're proceeding with as a value of sixteen point six million dollars for the entire Berry Farm project?
Uh, we've actually been in discussion, uh, with, uh, our development partners. And, um, we'll update you on that, that ground lease information when we bring the full financing plan to you.
Did you re, did you resubmit the letter to HUD? Because this letter indicates that there's no vouchers going to the project.
So when we do the disposition, we'll get, uh, updated disposition approval and update HUD on our full plan, uh, when we get to that, that state.
HUD hasn't, HUD hasn't approved the disposition then?
Not the disposition, the overall demolition. We have to update HUD at each phase of the project.
Oh, it's complicated. So does the agency have the money? I think I heard this earlier, but does the agency have the money to fund these vouchers?
Yes.
Is there CFO on the phone?
Yes, Commissioner, I'm here.
So do, does the agency have the, the funds, um, to support these thirty project, uh, I guess local and supplement vouchers?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good. Um, I think that's, that's all I have. I think, I think what's critical and what has always been unclear and still remains unclear is the value that the agency, since we are not participatory in the ownership of this entity, of this project, our entire value, we, we, we put in this land and it's really going to be critical to understand what we're getting because what I'm looking at is not an arms-length transaction. We're getting the disc, the land appears to be significantly discounted. And so the question's going to become, as we continue to shovel more and more vouchers into this project, you know, we got at some point, take a step back and make sure that we're doing, we're doing the best here by everybody and using our resources as best we can. Um, so I, I hope we can get some clarity on all that. I've been asking for years and it just seems to remain, um, out of focus. You understand my concern?
We understand and we'll give you more clarity as we get to the financing plan for Building One B.
And I see a question in the chat there about what does sweat equity mean? That's a really interesting question. So the developer, I assume, gets fees on lay as part of, you know, some, all that DMPED money and all that money that comes in. I assume they're getting some money out of that to, to support their staff, correct?
There's an administrative fee for construction management and management.
So it's not really sweat equity, they're getting paid? Thank you. Um, I, I just, just for the record, I won't be able to support this resolution just because the clarity of the overall project is, is not, hasn't, hasn't come into focus. As I said, I have a difficult time in this, the way we're doing it.
Uh, can I make a motion to, uh, call the vote?
Motion, second?
I second.
Tabled it, table that one.
Alethian?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
Staying.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Van Gossery?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you. Uh, Chair Bussi Rea?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have five yes, three no, one extension. The resolution is approved.
Thank you. Moving to the next resolution. Resolution twenty-one, twenty-two? Yes, um, this resolution is, um, for Parkway Overlook, um, project. It is a request, um, for the Board of Commissioners to amend an existing, um, housing assistance payment contract to provide an additional sixty project-based vouchers for Parkway Overlook, um, property so that we can, um, satisfy the requirements, um, to move towards, to, to convert from a construction loan to permanent financing. Entertaining questions?
I'll start. So previously, this project was awarded, um, fifty-five project-based vouchers during its initial underwriting, correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct. Andre, can you confirm?
Correct.
Yes.
The total unit count of the property is two hundred and twenty units, right?
Yes.
So if we add these sixty to the existing fifty-five, that would be hundred and fifteen project-based vouchers going to support a Lytec project, correct?
Yes.
It's my understanding from what you provided us, there's forty-five tenant-based vouchers at that property currently.
Correct.
So the total number of vouchers supporting the two hundred and twenty unit Lytec property, Lytec-funded property is a hundred and sixty. If we, if we approve these sixty project-based vouchers, right? So that's seventy-five percent of the building. Right? The average cost of these vouchers is about fifteen hundred bucks. There were fifteen years, that's forty-five million dollars worth of subsidy. Potentially. Project. Yes? Okay, I'll take that as a yes.
Can, um, can I ask my team to verify that? Because we, we did project, uh, we shared in Brown Bag, um, a lot of details pertaining to, or in response to your questions. And I know for the sixty vouchers, the projected cost of fifteen years is seventeen million. So I'm not sure if the, if you're using the same per voucher formula to get to the amount that you just stayed on record. So I just want to make sure that's correct for my staff to calculate.
I think Commissioner Slover is referring to the hundred and sixty vouchers.
Yeah.
And that is, uh, approximately forty-three million dollars over the course of fifteen years.
Thank you.
So close enough for government work, right? Um, so it is, would it be considered double subsidizing a Lytec building by putting project-based vouchers on it? Because a Lytec is supposed to support the subsidy at fifty percent. A fifty percent Lytec building should support itself. But we're, we're injecting seventy-five percent voucher capacity into it. Is that a, is that the, is that a best practice?
John, do you want to address that?
So Commissioner Slover, uh, the reason we're asking for these vouchers is because we had some difficulty with collections during COVID. Uh, so normally speaking, you would be, uh, correct, the Lytec project would support itself.
There were, the vouchers are basically rescuing, I mean, so it is in essence, when you do a Lytec deal, in theory, you've subsidized it, but now we've got to put in more subsidies. So one could consider a double subsidy. How, did you ever ask Wells Fargo, uh, how long will Wells Fargo give us to stabilize these rents? In other words, the timelines you've put in to your, to your documents would suggest that this is on a quick fuse. If the building's a hundred percent occupied, you're basically trying to stabilize the rent through sixty project-based vouchers. How are you going to churn the existence into these vouchers in a way? I mean, how long is Wells going to give you to do that?
Right, so, um, I'll, I may raise this question last time. So, um, I don't know if John Stringfield or Andre has the, the, the answer to how we're, um, because some tenants are going to be relocated into other mixed income units, those tenants who have no income. But there is a process for making sure that we maximize, um, all of the vouchers. So I'll let one of you answer that. The timeline question is, um, we've already tried that. So, uh, Wells has given us, um, two extensions. And they wanted, part of the reason for the extension was to see if performance would improve after COVID, if rent collection performance would improve after COVID. Unfortunately, um, there's not been enough time to, to demonstrate that because the, um, State D.C. funds, which we greatly appreciate, were available through August and then, um, could also be used to pay three months ahead. So there really is no timeline beyond the additional funding from State D.C. to really see if the, um, rent collections would, can be improved without having those, that additional funding available. So basically, Wells has called the question and said, well, that's not going to be enough. We appreciate you collecting that money, but there's not enough time to see if the rent collections are going to improve. So therefore, we need to see, we need a different way of, of you making that commitment. And that is through the project-based vouchers.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I miss, I think you misunderstood my question. I understand that. I understand how we got to where we are.
Uh-huh.
Saying is, you actually deploy these vouchers, you're going to have to move out sixty people, families, or you're going to have to give families these vouchers. And so my question to you is, how long is Wells Fargo going to give you to deploy these sixty vouchers to stabilize the rent?
Okay.
Does that involve evicting people? Because oftentimes, you know, you can't get to where you're trying to get without doing that.
Okay, so I know the first part of it is that we, um, have eleven families who are in the process of being relocated. No one is being evicted, but being relocated to other, um, mixed finance properties, um, where there are some vacancies. And those are families who have no income. And I think four or five have already been moved. The others are in the process of being moved. John can tell me how long we have to do that. Um, we were trying to get a move by the end of December. I don't know if that's a hard deadline by Wells. The others, as I understand, then we would be basically allowing families who are living there, who have not been able to pay rent, to assume the project-based vouchers within their units. And someone needs to correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, that's, uh, that's right. So I just want to add here that, uh, uh, first of all, Wells Fargo will not be counting any tenant-based vouchers because those tenants could leave the property. Uh, so they're only counting project-based at this point. Uh, and as for the time that is given to us, uh, there hasn't been a specific deadline, but they would like to see, uh, commitments from the board and from the DCHA this month. So they can put it in the package. And they would like to see, uh, some performance as to, uh, a certain number of individuals given some vouchers by February. So that hasn't been a strict deadline to, as to when we can use those sixty vouchers.
All right, thank you. Um, I think to do a question, who's been negotiating with Wells? And how long have we known that this is a problem? Because I think I've mentioned a few times, a couple of us on the board have been asking about this project for an entire year. And, you know, everything was, everything was fine, it was fine, it was fine, it was fine. And all of a sudden, it's really not fine. And so I'm trying to get to an execution risk issue that I'm concerned about with the agency, which is, you know, the board asks questions and is, is told everything's fine. And then again, it's not. And so who's negotiating with Wells? And when did we see the cracks? And, and when did we understand we were on this path? And this problem was, was surfaced? Because I feel like we're in another one of those situations where we
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
This is not a request, this is a, a demand.
So ever since I got here, Parkway Overlook has, staff has been briefing me on Parkway Overlook and trying to get to a path forward to converting to, um, um, permanent financing. And the initial focus was to try to stabilize the rent collection. And I understand that the, the development was, was managed poorly by a private provider. And then DCHA took over. And at that time, there weren't, it wasn't even full and all of the residents or tenants had not even been certified. So they stabilized it from that end and then COVID hit. Um, during the, um, last year, year and a half in, during the pandemic, it was hard to determine whether or not the project was, you know, was performing well in terms of rent collection because it was kind of hidden through the pandemic. But staff has been working on this with our other agencies for quite a few months. Um, Jeff Lines, whom you all have met as, as our consultant, um, has been the lead negotiator. But, um, Don Sarah, our CFO, has been involved as well as other members of the team, looking for one, to try to convince Wells that after the pandemic, we, rent collection would, would stabilize or would improve. Two, to try to convince them to accept the solar income. And the team has negotiated contracts for that. But I believe that has not been accepted, even though it will still count as income for us, which does go to the project's ongoing, um, viability. But I'm not sure at what point the board was told this was fine. And there have been intense negotiations over the last three or four months.
Um, yeah, we, there were lots of times it was asked about and lots of times we were told that there was nothing to worry about. Um, I'm going to ask the same question I asked before. You know, this is a lot of vouchers. Um, we have also committed a significant number of vouchers to a significant number of the project. And I know we don't have a lot of vouchers. And so I think that a very logical question would be, do we have the money to fund this as well as obligate ourselves to all the other commitments that we've made to the New Communities projects, to various other projects? And do we have this money now, today?
Yes, we do, John. We, we're not going to bring anything to the board unless my CFO, I'm not going to bring anything to the board unless my CFO has certified that we have the funding. And not just the funding today, but if it's ongoing operating, that we, we, we're going to have that funding going forward. So that's my responsibility. My CFO is here if you want to ask him directly.
Do we have the funding?
We don't have, we don't have the funding. We have an FY twenty underspent and, uh, we're going to utilize that for the initial year. And we expect some additional, um, capacities to be built throughout, uh, the next years to fund this.
So if the additional capacities don't come online and those things don't happen, do we have these? do we have the ability to fund all of the commitments we've made already?
We would rely on those capacities, which I think that we have a good plan to execute on.
And what are those capacities?
I think, you know, we're working internally with the ED on building those. So I would like to either defer to her or to actually, you know, keep those for now until we get the final data on those capacities. But we do have a plan.
But you have to execute on that plan. And that plan has not come together. So in essence, if that plan doesn't execute, which a lot of plans don't, then we potentially might not have the ability to fund all the vouchers that we've committed to.
So we do have the funding to fund all the vouchers we have committed to. We know that this is an additional request. And we think that the risk of not doing this, being able to stabilize this deal and convert this financing has much broader implications that we, that would affect a number of other projects and another, other financing opportunities. So we are coming to you with the funding in hand. If we have to make adjustments, we will make adjustments. We are coming with funding for this. We know that it's a long-term commitment. But it's, as I said, the risks have far greater implications financially and otherwise for future and some already ongoing deals that will be financed in similar ways.
Okay, that's an interesting line that I wanted to get to as well. So, you know, we set up this capital housing partnership just so we could be a guarantor, which is what we've done here. So we've taken the risk, that's what we've done. But the whole notion of that entity was to shelter, to protect us from any sort of ongoing liability. So those are standalone entities. The way you set up real estate deals is they're single-purpose entities. And everything is confined to the various properties and doesn't cross collateralize. But again, what you presented to us would appear that you're suggesting that if we were to default, which a private developer would take a look at this and say, it may be time to move on. Because we're not executing, we're continuing to shovel money into this project. And it's not, maybe our resources are better used somewhere else. And your response to it is, it sounds like we're cross-collateralized. And if we were to do that, it would be a cascading effect onto all these other projects. Is that what you're saying?
Well, partially.
Even without cross-collateralizing, what we're saying is, from a reputational standpoint, the agency is backing these projects. And backing this project with capital housing projects, if it defaults, from a reputational standpoint, we will not, will be challenged to get future financing.
I would suggest I wouldn't put a lot of credence in that. I mean, name me a developer that hasn't blown himself up on a deal. My point is, if the deal is strong, people are going to finance it. It is an option to walk away from this. But what you're presenting to us is this catastrophic result. I think is not accurate. Either it is accurate, we shouldn't have set up that way. And if it isn't, you shouldn't say it is.
Well, I've been told that it is. And I, by our financial advisors, by our partners, we're asking for a $1.14 million additional commitment out of a $600 million budget. We have identified the funds to solidify this project that houses 220 families. It would be irresponsible of us to walk away over that amount of money that we feel we can commit to, to make this project salvageable and to not risk other financing deals that also rely on bond and investors. And we've given you, this project is viable in terms of ongoing operating costs. It operates in the black with some surplus. This is to get us to the point where we can move into that, to that construction loan. So that, those are our arguments. And we think that the additional funding and additional project-based vouchers to stabilize this project benefits a lot of people and secures our ability to receive other, or to continue on other deals that have similar financing models. So we've given you the information. We've given you also what you asked this Commissioner Slower. What is a, what if we defaulted in the walkaway cost, which would be extraordinary? And we do not advise support to do that. We are asking the board to approve this resolution. And you're asking some of the same questions. So I don't know if there are others to.
I'm getting on the public record, that's what I'm doing. By the way, the walkaway cost would be $5 million the way we're set up. That would be it. The rest of it is up to interpretation. I want to go one more thing. I know Commissioner Strickland, you have a question, I apologize. So in the resolution, in the fourth whereas, it says, "As permitted by HUD and DCHA regulations, owner and DCHA seek to modify HAP contract to add additional project-based vouchers up to 60 units to Parkway Overlook project." And if you look at the back of the resolution you provide us, it would appear that we're also approving the amending of our regulations?
Yes.
Am I misreading this? Because it sounds like if we don't amend our regulations, we can't even put these vouchers in here. So have we discussed all of what we're doing here? Because it says here that we're amending our resolution, or amending so that we can add vouchers. So one of this, DCHA may amend a HAP contract to add and substitute new project-based vouchers to ensure maximum amount of BBV. But we can't even do that unless we alter our regulations?
So HUD permits it under HAPMA. And so that's why this is a combined resolution that steps through all the things that we would need to do. And it's included in the memo in the resolution, the steps we would need to take.
Is everybody aware that we're amending our regulations to this degree?
Correct.
Have people read this?
So HAPMA, the HUD statute was amended to permit housing authorities to add to the existing HAP contract. So we wanted to lay out for you the steps that we would take.
But since deconcentrating poverty, I mean, you're adding 60 project-based vouchers. It's not deconcentrating poverty. I just don't, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to support this. But I just don't know that people realize how much you're asking in this resolution. It's not just 60 project-based vouchers. There's a lot of, you're amending a lot of what we do.
Commissioner Strickland, do you have a question?
Yeah, it's more, I mean, I know Commissioner Slower has beat this. But my question is on this Parkway overlook is, is this it right here? If you get this, will we be done with Parkway overlook in terms of making sure that we get to closing, we're out of the construction loan? And we're past that? Because I know there's been several problems in the past. And to the defense of the executive director and much of this leadership team, you were not there to ink this deal in there in the beginning. So I know your guys are trying to clean up some issues that were, that you adopted, you know? But, but, but that said, it's still our responsibility to make sure that this moves forward. And if this is, is it it? Basically, my question. If we approve this today, will we not be coming back to this board in two months on something else as it relates to closing Parkway overlook?
John?
Yes, Commissioner Strickland, this deal is a viable project. And we're estimating about 300K per year in the black. In year one, actually, year, ongoing years will be about at 400K per year. So this deal is financially viable. And we should not be coming back to the board for it.
And if you're asking if we need anything else in order to satisfy the underwriting and the move to the construction, I mean, the permanent financing, I would just say this, that the negotiations have gotten us to this point where Wells is saying, if we can get the board to approve the 60 project-based vouchers, their conversations with Fannie Mae, where the rent collection rates are now, not counting the solar, that that would seal the deal. But that's, those are, those are all the negotiating points. We need to send the package officially to Fannie Mae, I think on the 15th. It is going to be their final decision. But everything that we have been told in every step along the way, that this is where we have gotten and that this is what would allow the deal to be finalized.
Thank you, Director. I'm going to call for a motion.
I have something to say, may I say something?
We're going to entertain Commissioner Van Gosri and Commissioner Hoffman. And then we're moving forward. Thank you.
I apologize once again, but I can't remember your name. But our newly-elected Commissioner, Dwayne Brown Bag, gave me, well, I took on a punishment assignment and I did briefly research New York Housing Authority that use this particular type of method. However, what I did see was when they was talking about costs, a lot of the discussion that Commissioner Slower was speaking about was in the study. Nevertheless, New York Housing Authority seems to have this model. The problem I have with the District of Columbia Housing Authority is the dialogue that we have in Brown Bag and the dialogue that we have today is never written into the resolution to balance out what you may say. If Fannie Mae says they're going to do A, B, and C, if Fannie Mae didn't give it to you in writing and you attach it to the correspondence that you bring to the board, the board wouldn't feel so uncomfortable voting on a resolution. Nevertheless, to say, I'm uncomfortable with this too. Because now, when you was talking about Wells Fargo, and then I researched Wells Fargo and how they do business with a lot of housing authorities. And remember, New York City is one of the largest housing authority. And they have been successful with this particular model. I feel that in the near future, my recommendation is, when you're using a model for telling the District of Columbia, which is not even a state, which is a municipal corporation, you put those type of models and show us where one housing authority versus the other, instead of verbally telling us. Because when you verbally tell us, you leave this board, we have nothing in writing. And then we start all over with the next new commissioners. I do understand, and no disrespect, that I understand that Potomac Gardens may be impacted by this with its spread in several other communities. I would have to abstain on this, abstain on this particular resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Gosri. Commissioner Hoffman?
You're on mute.
You're muted, Commissioner Hoffman. You're muted.
For Mr. Stringfield first, is your prediction of the building being self-sustaining and producing based on people paying rent or not paying rent?
I'll defer to Andre. But based on all of our research and our calculations, that is based on how to quit payment for, from our tenants, currently.
Andre? Are there, is this speculation?
No, it's not speculation. We've under, DCHA, OCP, and our consultants, we've underwritten this project multiple ways for the last two or three months. And the financing plan that we've come up with estimates that we will have 300K in net profits per year, excuse me, year one, and 400K per year ongoing.
And that's if people start paying rent or if people keep not paying rent?
That's based on.
So the number that Mr. Stringfield is using is, we're actually factoring in some loans, rental subsidy, not subsidy, but rental payments, that's about 5%.
That's way better than what we're doing now, isn't it? Now, a question, I don't know who to address this to. But are the people who live in Parkway Overlook DC Housing Authority clients?
Do you mean former public housing residents?
No, I mean, present. Present public housing residents or voucher holders?
Yes. So, so they can be, some of them transferred from Berry Farm. Some of them are former Parkway from the previous development. And then they're.
But they were not, but they were not ours. We didn't select them and move them in there, correct?
It's a combination. It really is. I mean, some people moved in from Berry Farm as a part of the relocation. These are, this was a former site that was vacated. And those people were the first people to come back. This is, this was never public housing, I just want to be clear. This was not a public housing site. But now, the people who live there, who have a voucher, they're voucher participants. If they're on project-based, we work with them through the Housing Choice Voucher. But there could be other people who were former Parkway. And there are people who might be former Berry Farm. It's a combination. But this was never a public housing site, if that's part of what you're asking.
Yeah, well, with respect to the people who have no income and we're moving them, are we moving them into public housing?
We're moving them into mixed-income properties that have, is it low-income, LITC or?
Waiting lists.
They're not coming from the, no, they're not coming from the waiting list.
They're removing them to places that have a site-based waiting.
Yes, correct.
So they're bumping the waiting list?
Correct, it's an end around.
They're not bumping, they're not considered bumping the waiting list.
By you. Why are they not considered bumping the waiting list?
Because each site has an agreement that they can have a site-based waiting list. These are mixed finance sites, I believe Darren is not on. But some of our mixed finance sites have site-based waiting lists.
And so that people off our regular waiting list can't be placed there?
We'd have to look at each one. When, in mixed finance, the first step is to get people, as a part of redevelopment, move from who return. But over time, there are a site-based waiting lists.
And these people are going ahead of the site-based waiting list? No.
They're going on the site-based waiting list.
How, they don't have time to wait. They have to go right now.
There are a number of vacant slots that our team has identified that the 11, a very small number of people can move into. And they've been in the process of matching them up and relocating them into those units. Certainly, they could move into public housing if they chose. But I imagine that they would prefer to live in a nicer mixed unit, mixed finance.
I think all of our residents would prefer to live in nicer units.
Yes.
And people on the waiting list would prefer to move into nice units.
Yes.
I don't quite understand how we're getting the right to put these people who have no income ahead of anybody who's been waiting for housing. Anybody have an explanation?
It's the same answer. So the, our General Counsel said, they're a site-based waiting list. They have different criteria for moving for who can occupy those units. They are based on income, but they do not have to come through our waiting list. That is part of how they are managed. I don't, that's the same answer. You might not like it, but that's the answer.
I think it's not an answer.
It is an answer. Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners regarding this resolution?
I'm sorry, I have one other question. I was looking at Resolution 1725, which authorized the first 55 vouchers that were going to stabilize the project back in 2017. And interestingly, it says, of the 55 of Housing Choice Voucher Program vouchers, 11 units will be reserved for households that are transitioning from homelessness and that require permanent supportive housing. Those aren't the 11 that you're moving out, are they?
I don't think it's, it's not the same 11. It's 11 families who have lost complete, who no longer have income. Now, are some of them the same? I have no idea. But that's, from this point in time, those are families who have no income and no way to pay rent. Those are families who have no income and no way to pay rent.
So will there still be 11 units set aside for households that are transitioning from homelessness and require permanent supportive housing?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I noticed that in here it says that emergent, you're passing these amendments to our administrative plan by emergency? And that's why there's no public, there's been no public comment on it? Is that, is that, is that the case?
We need to, as has been indicated, be able to amend this app. So it would go emergency as well as proposed. But we are, I think as John Sarah has indicated, we need to place so that we can provide the information to Wells Fargo.
So we got so far up against the wall that we have to basically pass this all through emergency without proper process?
We are up against the wall. Yes.
So you want to pass one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? Nine changes to our administrative plan to place these 60 vouchers?
Yes, these are permitted by HUD statute.
Okay, I'm just, as on an emergency. Okay. Well, I, I, I just think this is no way to run an airline, as they used to say back when I was a kid. So I will not be able to support this, this resolution. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion just before I do though, just the term good enough or close enough for government work is actually a disparaging term. In the Brown Bag, we had a conversation about we had a conversation about professional, you know, behavior at the board level. So just wanted to make a note of that on the record.
I would, I would apologize. I, you know, I sometimes, I apologize if anybody's offended about that. I understand your, your position and I sincerely apologize.
Thank you. I'd make a motion on the resolution.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. It's called for a vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz-Gao?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchakio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slower?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Goghary?
Abstain.
Thank you. Chairwoman Bussie Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have six yes, two no, one abstention. The resolution is approved.
Thank you. Let's move to the next resolution, Resolution 2123.
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this resolution is asking the board for an extension of a total of 119 days to extend the period of time to finalize a revitalization plan for Greenleaf, the Greenleaf Project and to negotiate or to execute a master development agreement. We have given the reasons for this multiple times, but primarily it is to allow the development team to come back with a tighter revitalization plan that they think will be successful financially and will be viable for that community. Has to do with refining the phasing of the project and some unit mix changes to accommodate large families and also to negotiate with us on the the subsidy package for the project. We, Commissioner Slower, we weren't in Brown Bag, but I do want to bring to your attention because you asked these questions very specifically in terms of the specifics of the deal that you usually say is not available to the board. We will be coming back to the board if you approve this resolution. The February 23th dev mod meeting with a phasing plan, including estimated start and completion dates, description and details of proposed building types, the anticipated unit mix for each phase, including replacement units per phase, estimated costs for each phase, but with a detailed sources and uses for the first phase only. We will project out the other costs, general description of the business terms, whether it's ground lease versus fee simple, the rental subsidy program, proposed pre-development cost share and other related elements of the deal. So that would come back to the board in that level of detail the February 23rd dev mod meeting and then we would move forward. We are actually moving in parallel on negotiating the master development agreement as much as we can without some of the final details being specified. So we, this is another longstanding project that with a commitment for replacement of 493 low-income units and we know that the Greenleaf community has been waiting a long time for this. We are, we know we want to move forward. Everyone wants us to move forward. We're just asking for a couple more months to finalize some of these details and come up with a better plan. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
My question is, as it was before on this is, I know that we've been briefed behind, you know, about this. Two questions on it. First, is this 119 days enough and are we 1,000% as confident as we can be on that? Because when this resolution was first passed, I think almost everyone on the board agreed that, you know, we weren't going to do any extensions. But this is before we lost an executive director, before we lost a lot of key senior leaders and a lot of things has happened to this point. So we do understand those things. And all those things, none of that, no one said it was an issue, but I just want to make sure that 119 days is, is is the day, is the number and we're going to get what we want from it. And then also the follow-up, I know Executive Director listed all the things that are due out to the board in a particular time, but is, if, does it have to be all in the February meeting? Is there any way to, you know, not give it out as it comes, but maybe do it, you know, the sooner the better if possible? I don't know what strains on resources that is, but we would love to have information sooner so we have more time to digest it as it, if, once it's, hopefully if this resolution is passed.
I can commit that we have discussed and very clear with the Greenleaf Development Partners that there will be no more extensions after this, that everyone is committed to getting to a deal within that timeframe. If we can't, then we have to come back to the board with, with other options, but we're not going to ask for any more extensions. I don't know what, what can be finalized before then. We're, we're meeting at least twice a week with them. And if there are aspects of this that makes sense to share with the board ahead of time, we will do that. But I think it's probably all in context and you would want to get it all together. I know there will be lots and lots of questions, but we, that's why we've laid it out for the dev mod meeting. That would probably be the only topic so that there would be a couple of weeks before the board would have to vote.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes. According to the minutes of our last board meeting, you expected to be coming to this board meeting to present the redevelopment plan. What happened in the last three weeks to change your mind?
We came back at the dev mod meeting to say that we needed more time. So what happened, what really threw the curve into the whole project was the zoning commission meeting on, in November that denied use of the Westminster Church as an, as an additional site as part of Build First that would allow the project to be spread over a larger site. That resulted in us having to go back to just using our site to build in place so that we don't have to dislocate people. But that then that would require a much different mix of density of, of housing units, of larger sized units and buildings that before were planned to be high-rise buildings. They want to rethink that to see if that makes more sense to large, to house larger families in townhouse or garden style. That means reconfiguring a lot in terms of the elements of the deal and, and the financing capacity. So that's what happened and that's why we came back to the board and asked for more time.
When was that zoning commission meeting?
It was November, I want to say the 19th, but it was a date in November.
And that decision had been predicted several weeks before when the ANC said no and Westminster said no. No?
I don't know how you predict certainty of a zoning commission meeting, but I believe our team was hopeful that the zoning commission was supported. Until it was a no, they were going forward with the plans that they originally had proposed.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a question. I was on mute. Who's leading negotiations for DCHA with the development team?
OCP under John Stringfield and Andre Gould and other members of that team. Andre Gould is our lead on this.
So Andre is the lead negotiator with the development team?
Yes, along with other members of OCP.
Okay. In 2020, and this, some of this might be repetitive, but I'm going to get it on the record. In 2020, when this board approved the resolution that allowed the agency to proceed with the right to negotiate with the development team, it took two votes to get approved. During that process, this board was very clear there were to be no extensions on the time to be negotiated. In fact, we doubled the amount of time negotiate to avoid this very thing from happening, from being told at a point in the future that we had no choice but to stay the course because so much time had passed. The point we are at today, we're basically being told we have to continue going down this road because so much time has passed. The main reason I voted against this the first time is because the agency refused to provide any details on the financial obligations of the various partners, not to mention any details on delivery schedule or location of replacement units at that time. As recently as a month ago, I once again, when it became clear that they are not going to come together as planned, I once again asked for the financial picture, for the financial offer that the developer had made and once again was told it was not available to the board. So one year later into this process, the board's still in the dark, is being asked to trust the process. I don't have the level of trust and I think the risk is too high. I say this because the board has only had one meaningful update in the entire year that this project, that this, this, these negotiations have been going on. The second one was basically to inform us that they needed an extension. Again, the very thing we've been trying to avoid. The board at this point has no idea what the major hurdles are. Is it money? Is it unit size? Is it location? I don't know what the major problems are. I don't know what we're going to get from our land value. There's been no discussion of the land value. I don't know what the agency is being asked for in terms of subsidies. And I'm not sure that we should be ready to accept the fact that it's going to take 13 years if everything goes accordingly to deliver the units that we are required to deliver. I just don't know if this is the best we can do for our residents. On top of all that, I just recently learned that a portion of this land will be sold, which I didn't, I was unaware of when we started off this project. My understanding was the board had indicated to the executive director a couple of years ago that our, our, our perfect world scenarios were to be maintain ownership of the land and do long-term leases. With all that said, what, if this resolution is approved, what is the next thing the board would need to approve for this project to move forward? Assuming we gave you this extension.
The board would be asked to approve the revitalization plan.
What does that actually mean?
And so those were the things that I listed. Among those were the details that I listed that we would be presenting to the board and on, in the dev mod and those are the specifics of the deal.
According to the minutes of the meeting, which I suggested everybody read from when Resolution 2020 was passed, the then, the then executive director confirmed that the board would need to pass the master development agreement. So the question, is that, is that come back to the board for approval as was promised when this resolution was passed? And in November of 2020?
I was told that the master development agreement does not come back. That was not in the board resolution.
What happens here? So if you read the minutes, which I again suggested that you do, it was agreed to that that would happen. Often things don't get put into the resolution after the fact of when they've been agreed to. And that's where we are today. And so what I've never heard along the way here is that I keep hearing this ambiguous, we get to, you know, prove the redevelopment plan. But in actuality, what was agreed to was, and again, if you read these minutes.
Before Commissioner Slower, I have something to say before they cut me off. You want me to be rude, but I'm tagging on with you.
I'm just reading from the minutes. It says, "This resolution doesn't give the executive director or the administration full authority to execute any and all documents moving forward." It says, "The mass, it means the master development agreement will come back from the board."
And furthermore, I'm going to intervene on that. My constituent, who is the president of Green, of Greenleaf, Dean Walker, who I respect, and being that most of my constituents, I challenge you when I leave this board to do a focus group on how I vote. I've only known on this situation because she did send a letter to Phil Morrison and she outlined it why. That she wanted this resolution by resident commissioners not to be passed and that need to be placed in the record. You can finish now, Commissioner.
I'm just reading through all this. We go back and forth and back and forth and the executive director, Central Sancharun, Mr. Mays, everybody agrees that we're going to bring all these documents back that have historically never been brought back to the board on this deal. And now I'm hearing a year later, you're suggesting that that's not the intention.
All right.
So when we were in the dev mod meeting and I said, can everybody please read the minutes so we can get on the same page as to what is going to be brought back to the board, I guess that didn't happen. I'll have it right here.
Are you asking a question, Commissioner Slower, or are you making a statement?
Question, which is what's the next thing that's going to be brought back to the board for approval through a resolution?
Answer the I did. I said the revitalization plan and I listed all of the specific elements. It's not all of them, but some of this, the elements that are in the revitalization plan. That's what the board will approve. That's when you'll have a chance to pick apart the deal.
That's not what the executive director agreed to. The general counsel agreed to, the head of OCP agreed to. As reported in the minutes. This is what I remember in 2020, as indicated in the minutes. I'm uncomfortable approving this resolution on a lot of levels, not the least of which is it now sounds like we're going back on the promises made in 2020.
Commissioner Fauci, please.
I, I'm not sure where we are with the other commissioners. I was going to make a motion on the resolution.
Let me, let me check in. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? We heard you, Commissioner Slover. The question has been answered to the best of our bill.
So the answer, so answer the question is, I just want to get it clear that the board, the agency has no intention of honoring the commitments made when we've had this resolution in November of 2020.
So Chair, for the Chair, the reason I'm calling the question is because we have the resolution before us. That's what we're voting on, not something from the minutes from somebody who, three people who are not here. We have a resolution before us. I think Commissioner Hoffman has something that I want to move this resolution that's before us.
Commissioner Hoffman, I'm going to allow you to ask this question and we're moving forward because we're basing the vote on the resolution that's before us, not the minutes. Please move forward.
The resolution before us says 135 day extension. We have agreed that it's 119 day extension. I hope we will make that change on the record.
On the record, the change has been made. It's 119 days from December the 25th.
Alethea, can you also send it to the commissioners?
Alethea, could you make the changes, send it out, please?
We made the change. Can you send, when you have a minute, upload it or send it, or if you look, like I would, I can do it.
Has that been sent to me? If it's been sent, I'll forward it.
Okay. Thank you.
From Andre.
And again, just pointing clarification, it's 119 days from December 25th.
Which makes it April 23rd. Please move forward. I'm calling for a motion.
Motion.
Sorry, second.
Thank you. Alethea?
Thank you. Commissioner Counsel? I'm sorry, Commissioner Counsel, I didn't hear you. Yes? Let the record reflect that Commissioner Counsel said yes. Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauci?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes, as amended to the 119.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao?
Your best.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gostery?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. And Chair Bussie Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have seven yes and three no. The resolution is approved as amended with the 119 days.
Thank you. Moving forward?
Madam Chair, we have one final.
Resolution?
Item is the approval of LRSP for projects under Department of Housing and Community Development, and that is Resolution 21-24, I believe. Sorry, I have everything here. And that is to provide funding for project based vouchers for seven projects under the city's affordable housing program.
Any questions? Discussion regarding Resolution 2124? Hearing no questions? Give everyone an opportunity to unmute yourselves.
Hold on. I, unless somebody else has a question, go ahead. I have a question.
Please proceed, Commissioner Slover.
Because I recall there was a, this is a bifur- well, I'll, what I'm calling a bifurcated award and that we had awarded some money out of this process earlier. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, some money out of what?
There, there was a process from 2019 and I think we, we awarded some funding already and this is the second tranche, I'll call it.
I am not sure. I think there's actually some projects that are coming. There are some projects that are coming in January. I thought this was the first tranche, but.
There was an earlier tranche. I don't know, Andre, if you're on, but yes, there was, it was, I think we did it in March.
Can you remind me again? Because I believe that was awarded to MRP was the only project awarded out of it. And, and can you remind me the size of that award again?
I think that might've been the year prior.
No, it says in the, in the stuff, the documents you gave us, it says that they, they were awarded it because they didn't apply for Housing Production Trust Fund.
Was that done in 2020?
So this is the, this is FY22 funding, so this would be the first out of FY22.
It's the 19 NOFA.
Oh, out of the NOFA from?
In the resolution, it says this is from June 28, 2019.
Correct. So Director Hubbard, are you still on?
I'm here. This is, I'm saying, can I, DC, DC for stuff? Yeah, this is, this, so the, all of the projects that's come since March 2020 have been from the DHS 2019 RFP.
Right. And so the first award went to MRP, right? And they were the only awardee.
Yeah, the first time we appeared before your board because we weren't sure of the amount of HPTF that we had, given the impact of COVID on the budget. So we had selected two projects, one of which requested LRSP vouchers, another which had only requested tax credit. And then I think we came again.
The question I asked back then is, I thought your NOFA process required you to apply for all the subsidies and you guys decided who had to distribute them. Is that inaccurate?
No, that's correct. The RFP is the consolidated RFP, so.
Why did MRP not apply for Housing Production Trust Fund if they're required to under the NOFA?
Oh, I see. No, it's, we, you are, in fact, you have a slate of available gap financing tools, so you apply for whichever one makes the most sense for your project. So some projects might only think tax credits are the best, the most efficient use of dollars or they might only ask for a gap subsidy in the form of HPTF or, you know, they might only be looking for a PSH subsidy from DHS.
Oh, that makes it clear. So I'm just going to put on the record the same thing I always say, which is, you know, I, I can't support the resolution because I've never been able to understand the process that's run. And I know we don't have line of sight as an agency into the process. So it's hard for me as a board member to approve the awards of this size through a process that we don't have any line of sight into. And I've asked every time, I wonder if there's a different way that we could do this so that we're not actually passing these individual projects that were just sort of, do you follow my concern? Like I have no idea how these were awarded. And so I get that, that what you're trying to do, but I don't have a level of comfort approving them again, because I haven't, I don't know how, I don't know how the process was run. So for that reason, I, I, I've never been able to support these resolutions. I'm not sure why we approve, why we have to approve them the way we do.
I'm, I don't want to stymie the conversation, but I was going to make a motion on the resolution. I'm not sure if any other commissioners have it.
Is there anybody would, might answer the question as to why we have to approve these on the, the way we do it?
I, I would just, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, John. It's relevant to the resolution.
And, but we have this every time we've had one of these resolutions. I think if there's a process adjustment, that's a conversation to be had, but I don't know that it affects the underlying resolution.
So if I ask the question every time, the answer should be readily available.
And I think i- if, if I may, Commissioner Slover, I think you might remember in the past, we sort of did a presentation to explain how the consolidated RFP works. It goes through the thresholds, criteria such that we know that projects are minimum at least viable and then it goes through the whole scoring process by which then the DHSD director makes selection of the projects and weighs them against what the district's goals and priorities are at the time. I think LRSP, given that it's a local, it's local funds, it has a process piece of it, which is a lasting vestiges that any dollars had to be approved by the DCHA board. However, that's where we've tried to, you know, make it more clear that DHSD is the one that makes project selections and then we are asking you to then administer these vouchers on our behalf. And so I, I believe the reason that it goes in front of your board is the way the, I guess statute or current regs are written, but it's not so much as, you know, we're asking you to administer on our behalf, we're paying you a fee for that function.
Well, my, my suggestion in the future would be maybe you're going to just give us a bold number and say, this is the amount of money that we're using to fund the local supplement program this year. And I'm not really interested in seeing the individual projects remain to us, accepting the money to then, to then manage the program on your behalf. It would be, it would seem cleaner to me.
My one question.
And ask if we can take.
I have one question. My question is only whether or not any public housing or housing choice voucher residence in section three receiving any of the, of these dollars coming from this resolution or any of these organization that are listed, have they hired any of my constituents under section three? Being that the housing authority is getting paid, are we getting paid? Are we getting a cut? In other words, you have WMC, Smith Montgomery Housing Partnership, Locke Seven Development, et cetera, et cetera. Are any of them enforcing section three?
Do we have an answer?
Yes, Commissioner, we, all of our projects comply with all applicable, applicable federal statutes and the CB Act source. And so all of our projects are subject to section three.
Okay. So in the near future, if you have attachment of this nature, it would be nice if you have a column and you, each of these organize, or each of these developer, if any of ACVP or public housing residents are working on these projects, to put their number, how many of us are being employed? Whether we're employed as a permanent resident, a trainee, apprentice? Because other than that, how would I know that I support section three? How would I know that they're really at section three?
I under- okay. We understand that. I would take that under advisement. I think these projects are still in predevelopment, so as they move forward and hire workers, I think that's data we could pull.
So is the question yes or is the question no? Or is the question they will be hiring? Which of the three questions?
They will be hired and they must comply with section three.
So when will we get something in writing saying that? So if you say that in the future, that would a little bit, because I, now, I'm going to support this based on you saying that each one of these developers going to hire public housing residents or they're going to hire housing choice voucher residents, they're going to hire us to employ us. Now, I want you to understand, we know how to type, we know how to read, we know how to comprehend information. We don't always have to be your clerk or clean your floors. And no offense for people that clean floors, because I don't have any problems with that. But I want you to know, we have some skill for residents. So once this resolution passed, when would you get back to the board, letting them know? And remember, I only have two more board meetings. So when would you get back to the board, letting the board know how many residents will a developer's hire and not necessarily only see, you don't, you're missing Ward five because in the District Columbia Housing Authority, there are family properties in every ward except three. So we want to see a population of our ward, even though I know Ward A is very territory and Councilmember White's very territorial, making sure that his residents be hired. And remember, I live in Ward Six, but we also have other wards. So when we see attachment of this nature, and I, I'm not, give, don't get me wrong, seniors are imporable too, but I'm elected family commissioner and I do look out for seniors because there are seniors in all family properties that are here in the household. But section three should show every ward of the city, one through eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Gostery. There are no other questions?
Uh, motion on the resolution.
Second.
Alethea?
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman? Commissioner Hoffman, are you there for your vote?
Yeah, I voted no.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao? Commissioner Ortiz Gao, I didn't hear response. Free vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauci?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Counsel? Thank you. Commissioner Van Gostery?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chair Bussie Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have seven yes, two no. The resolution is approved.
Thank you. Before we entertain any public comment, I failed to announce one of our newest commissioners. I would like to welcome Commissioner Raymond Skinner. Please forgive me for not doing this earlier, sir. We welcome you to the board. Do you have any comments that you would like to share? Any, any, anything about yourself that you want to let our residents and our public know and we'll move forward from there. You have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm, I just would like to say, I'm, I'm really delighted to be able to work with this board and with, with the staff and with all the stakeholders who were involved in, in the DC Housing Authority developments throughout the city. I've had a long history of involvement in the housing field. I was the director of housing in Prince George's County, Maryland, and subsequently the Secretary of Housing and Community Development for the state of Maryland. So I've got a lot of experience and prior to that, I actually worked in the district government for almost 10 years on and off in the Marion Barry administration. So I lived in the district and moved to Maryland and I'm back in DC. I'm delighted to be here and I hope that my experience in the housing field can help the authority to move some of these projects along. I know as we've talked about today, there are several projects, many, many projects that have, for various reasons, have languished over the years. But we have a new executive team in place and I just hope that we, as a board, can come together, work with the new executive team and move these projects forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Skinner, and again, welcome aboard. We're moving to the public comment section. Alethea, I'm going to ask that you announce.
Sure. Okay. So the first person we have on the list is Lamont Baxter. Lamont Baxter on. Okay. Patricia Bishop?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Patricia Bishop. I'm resident council president of Greenleaf Midrives and also a member of the DRAG advisory board. I pretended to speak out and get in good trouble due to the fact of the developers and changing what I know that happened years ago when Charles Allen spoke and said there will be a first build site and then to start the building. This is the truth. Whoever says and denies this do not need to be doing business with Greenleaf residents or Department of Housing Commissional Board. We are so sick and tired of the lies, the back and forth disrespect and mistreatment of us, the tenants. With everything that we see going on with other properties being discussed at these commissioner board meetings, it is ridiculous and a blank disrespect. Harper Capers, seventy-seven thousand land and property that HUD housing has already agreed to developers to take care of and do for the people that was originally living there? That ain't happening. All these other properties are going through the same disrespect. It's time for everybody to take a second look and realize this and stop this before this situation results in more homeless people living in tents. Because someone wants to go by what another city, Washington DC is the nation's capital of cities. This has been going on for too many years, over and over. It's time to get into good trouble and stop all this immediately. No more of this. It cannot keep happening to seniors, young adults, children. That if y'all want us to continue to respect you and look up to you for a job well done? We are telling y'all that these jobs are not well done. And we just ask that you do what's right by us. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Uh, next we have, um, Mution Umar. Mr. Umar, you have five minutes.
Yes, good afternoon. This is, um, Vosa Umar from President, President from Garfield Terrace Senior Building. My issues is about, uh, vendors. And, uh, I was clear when we had our training, uh, that Mr. Kenny Counselor made it very clear about when it comes to a vendor, we have the right to have vendors that we want in our facilities. We have that right. According to our bylaws, uh, we have the right for beginning date, even end date. We have the right to sit down with those vendors before they come in here, so we can have that agreement. Yeah, my problem was since 2018, and I'm gonna be specific. Terrific Inc. has been operating out of Garfield Terrace on an illegal MOU. They falsified documents in 2018. This is why I never signed the new agreement. Ms. Joseph knows this and just as well as Byron Pew knows this, because we had this discussion with them recently. And Ms. Joseph and Byron Pew forced upon themselves to disregard and disrespect our bylaws by allowing Terrific Inc. to re-enter Garfield Terrace without a MOU. And that someone should be brought up on charges for fraudulent. They falsified documents. We took it to the office of agent. This, Ms. Ms. Joseph knows this personally, because she told us, oh, that don't mean nothing. They gonna still follow along with Terrific Inc. being here? Our bylaws, even you don't care about our bylaws, Ms. Jo-
Did we lose Mr. Umar?
Yeah, um, Alethea, if we can't get Mr. Umar back on, I will follow up with him directly. We have in prior meetings, uh, indicated that we have worked with Mr. Umar to, to, to resolve these issues and I thought we were in a better place, but um, clearly we, um, he still has some concerns, so I will follow up with him directly.
Who is that who just spoke?
Sorry, Commissioner Hoffman, it's Rachel Joseph.
So you will follow up with him and you're putting this on record?
I am putting this on record. I have been in communication with him very early on this.
Excuse me, he's a resident. We're gonna respect him being a resident. You're-
Ms. Burbage, you're muted.
He is a resident. He's living through this dilemma. And one of the points that we need to make is residents are emotionally involved. And we know about the board, because you get misappropriation of funds, you get conflict of interest. Everybody seem like on the board is stealing and taking from the residents.
Ms. Burbage?
So you're not dismissing him.
Ms. Bit, Ms.?
I wait my time.
Thank you, Burbage. Ms. Burbage, you have not, I hear your concern, but we want to make sure you're recognized appropriately. Give me, thank you. Mr. Umar, are you back? Have you been returned? Do you want to finish out your testimony? Alethea?
Okay, the next person is Karen Sattles.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Five minutes, yes.
Yes, so I, I'm, I'm here to, um, um, first of all, I want to, um, wish everyone, uh, on the board and residents online, a happy holiday first. I wanted to share briefly with undertaking that, uh, I participated in and a few, a few residents participated in others in a, um, in a training, what we call a journey for, um, healing coaches at Starrett Terrace. Uh, I shared with, um, Chairman, uh, Donald, uh, about this. Uh, one of the results of it is, is that, um, I now uh, am getting ready to set up a healing station at Starrett Terrace. And, um, I wanted to briefly share that. I'll give other details at a later time. The other thing I wanted to speak on is the Citywide Advisory Board. And the fact that the Citywide Advisory Board has had for a few months now, some, uh, consultants to help restructure the Citywide Advisory Board to be able to present to, to the director. Um, in that restructuring, we are anticipating, um, submitting a resolution. Uh, uh, with the, um, accordance with the Housing Authority, um, to make sure that we are back on, on track as a Citywide Advisory Board, as well as to have the voices of the residents heard, uh, specifically the resident leaders who are part of this board. And, um, I just wanted to say that today.
Thank you, Ms. Sattles.
Excuse me. I wanted to also say, is my timer?
No, ma'am. Two more minutes.
So, um, 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 I'd like to make, uh, uh, an exchange with, um, uh, with Director Donald um, as to, uh, meeting with her, so that we can set some things up.
Yeah, absolutely, Ms. Sattles. I was just trying to say that, but I was muted. So I look forward to your proposals and, um, figuring out how we can work better together.
Yes, that, that, that's, that's the slogan that we are working with as far as us working together, because, uh, if I may say, uh, um, this is one of those times of the year that all of us are impacted in different ways and it all does matter. Uh, the different ways that people are affected. But at the same time, uh, in a productive way, we all have to know that working together is one of the things that we have to do. And in order for us to work together in the future, because of the way that I've been listening to, um, you know, the exchange here, uh, clarity is necessary for people to be able to make intelligent decisions. As a leader and amongst other leaders, one of the things that I've always been clear on is that in order for leaders to be able to lead and lead in a corrective way, we need proper information and questions answered when we ask them. Uh, that is a, a way that we, uh, respect one another. So I look forward to the Housing Authority understanding that leadership requires us to be able to take something to lead with and be legitimate in that. Because I, I take to offense that when I bring information to my residents and it's no longer relevant information, once they get it. We need to be clear on the information that we pass out. We sometimes can't give fast answers. So, you know, I thank you for that, uh, Director Donald, that, that, uh, we are seeing clear paths and they are getting clearer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sattles.
Thank you. Um, next we have, uh, Heather Day.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Day. You have five minutes.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. This time last year, my family was being rescued from my house fire. A house fire that was caused by a bathroom vent that I've been complaining about and requesting that it get cleaned or assistance from maintenance in a form of an opening event to clean it. Here we are, one year later today, and nothing has happened to my unit, except for the fact that I was rushed to remove my belongings and that I've been locked out of my unit. All of the items are still in the window, the tarp is on the roof, and there's no signs of any repairs at my unit. I've sent emails on August 25th, September 7th, and September 29th, asking Larry Williams and Ms. Watson about how long it takes to turn over the unit from the fire, once the possession has been returned to DCHA's inventory. To my, Mr. Williams' knowledge, um, the unit was turned over and DCHA had possession, but nothing was confirmed. And there has been no work on the unit that I was told that I'm going back to. Um, in June, June 9th, uh, according to the transcript, you can view the transcript, page 159, Mr. Slover asked, was there any way we can get some better understanding on how that I had to actually come to the board to testify, to get some assistance? He mentioned doing a backtrack or maybe some sort of forensic background check on how we can figure out how we got here, who was communicated? When were they able to communicate? Who dropped the ball? If the ball was dropped, he wasn't applying anything at the moment, but he was trying to assist with me getting some answers to some of the questions that I had. Chairman Albert agreed and assigned the task to Larry Williams, and there was still no update prior to him leaving. I had a meeting in July with Larry Williams and Samadra Watson, with hopes of some of the questions being answered on the ball dropping. No information was provided. I was trying to figure out what the plans were and the next steps as far as me and my family moving forward and resolving some of my issues. I had phone calls with, um, DCHA lawyers Andrea and Mr. Mays about my written request that I sent March 10th and May 10th in reference to rent abatement. I requested this rent abatement to help get my account squared, but to also address all of the issues such as the housing co-violations, um, you know, things from road infestation to hot water issues to electrical issues. The letter also included requests for all work tickets and detailed ledger from Wells Fargo to show my escrow payments. And also a current ledger to show my current balance, which honestly, at this point, it should be zeroed out. October 13th, Chairman Albert personally asked Director Donald to reach out to me in reference to my list of concerns and lack of follow-ups and to report back to the board. Director Donald has agreed to reach out to me. It's almost been two months and I still have had no word from her. Director Donald also stated that she will be coming out to each other, individual communities and meeting with residents. I requested that I receive information, because I'm no longer on the property and I will not receive a paper message. Um, I was insured that I would get information pertaining to Elvin's Road, because I am still a resident of Elvin's Road, although I've been misplaced due to my fire. I just learned on the call today that the Elvin's Road Resident Engagement Meeting occurred on November 9th, and I had no information on this meeting. I also missed the opportunity to find out more information about the resident elections, which I've been talking about since I joined the board calls in September 2020 and did not receive any information. That was another opportunity that was missed. Um, I've been on the calls trying to get information on RAD, even before my fire happened. I spoke to Ms. Watson, Brandy Lynch, Larry Williams, Mr. Mays, Tyrone Garrett, Neil Albert, Councilmember Anita Barnes. I spoke to everyone that I could speak to in the chain of command and in my power about issues that have been going on with my family, issues at properties and questions about RAD. No one has given me any answer on anything. My question is, what is the plan for my family? Are we supposed to be stuck until I'm supposed to move out? Like, who was my point of contact on any of these, uh, any of these matters? My ABLE program was extended until February, but how do I complete a program if I'm still having these issues? I got into the ABLE program when I left Potomac Gardens to better myself and to better my family, to become a homeowner, but you guys are making it impossible. So who do I talk to? Like, how do I get this resolved? It's been ongoing, even with my unit, a year later, nothing has been done, but I was so quickly rushed and locked out of the unit. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Day.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Day, this is Brenda Donald. I, I apologize, um, that I didn't get back to you directly. I elevated it to members of my team who are responsible for addressing those issues. And I knew since you had been working with other members from our project management team to our general counsel, that I thought it made sense that they would follow up, since there have been some initial, um, review into your, into your situation. But this is what I will do. I will convene a meeting with everybody and you so that we are clear about exactly what the issues are and what more that, um, that you need.
Okay, may I ask, who are those people?
Well, I'm gonna go back and look at everyone who's, who's touched your case. I'm, I'm looking now and I do see the general counsel who I referred it to. And, um, um, the property man, um, um, Brandy Lynch, who is our, um, over our property management team. So they, they are in the responsible areas where people can actually do something or can tell us why it can't be done and explained clearly. So I will commit to that and we will, we will schedule a meeting with everybody. I'll be up to speed by the time we sit down, so I know exactly what it is and, and why things got stuck. And I do apologize.
Okay, because yeah, this is just like a repeat of the ball being passed around.
Yeah, that's why I'm gonna be in the meeting.
Okay, and also, um, can Daniel of Improv DC be, um, in on that meeting, so take notes for my, for me?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Daniel of Empower, Empower DC? I asked that he be included on the meeting to take notes on my behalf. Is that okay?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Whoever you want to bring into the meeting, um, I will actually be out of town next week. Um, if you are available over the holidays, I can schedule something for when I get back. And I will, we will put it on the calendar before I leave, which is Friday. So we'll reach out to schedule the meeting. You will have a scheduled meeting, um, tomorrow to schedule the date with everybody, but it will be either the week of the 20th or the 27th, if that's okay.
Okay, and my email, my phone number, all of my contact, everyone has my-
We do. Thank you, Ms. Day.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, just to be clear, Ms. Director Donald stating that you will have a meeting by the week of the 20th or the week of the 27th?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I, uh, I, I, Ms. Day, I'd like to respond to something, because I do recall this conversation. Can the agency, um, either, uh, continue or start or restart the process of trying to dissect how this came to be? Because it seems to be a reoccurring theme amongst the people who are testifying that they make calls, they can't get through, there's promises made, promises not made. Is there, is there, uh, is that, is that okay?
Sir, and to everybody, um, yes, I have reached the same conclusion that we have people who, um, can't get through, there's no follow-up. Um, complaints are large, things are dropped. I totally see that. I've been, that's, I've been spending my time, as has our chief operating officer, fielding a lot of these concerns and complaints ourselves, so we could get a handle on it. And, um, I will admit, it's, our system is broken. So I've already decided to create an office of the ombudsman within my office here, office of the executive director, one for, um, tenants and, um, one for general stakeholders that we're gonna be, um, putting together in the first part of next year. Meanwhile, we have been handling most of these complaints ourselves, but that's not, doesn't get to the systemic issues with responsiveness, tracking- but that's not, doesn't get to the systemic issues with responsiveness, tracking, and follow-up. And so we're putting that in place. Meanwhile, we're at the, taking these meetings ourself and trying to run interference as much as possible. But, um, that was for the purpose of really trying to figure out what was going on. So I understand why we have people coming in repeatedly and, um, it's not acceptable. So we are putting a fix in place.
Will a resident, will a resident be a part of this? Because for us, it's personal. We're living this. This is our life, and it's a job for everyone else. So will there be a resident, a part of that committee that you're putting together to help stress our concern?
I'm not sure who's talking, but it's, it, this is for the residents. It's staff who will be assigned and responsible for resident issues and concerns and making sure that, that, um, we are responding in a timely manner, that we're tracking, that we're following up, that we're communicating honestly, all of those things that everyone should expect from a public agency.
Right. I mean, it's Ms. Day talking, but I was just asking, will a resident be a part of it? I understand it's for the residents.
Yeah, it's not a committee. Okay, yeah, it's not a committee, but I'll, I'll talk to you about it a little bit when we meet.
Let me intervene here. Ms. Davis, what, what Director Donald was stating is that she's been responding, her and her immediate team, to all resident concerns. She's creating a team within her to actually be able to respond more expeditiously to the concerns of the residents. So we're not looking to place a resident. This is not a committee. She's actually going to respond directly through the ombudsman office and that's gonna actually report directly to the executive director.
And let me respond. Let me be.
One second, Ms. Burbridge, Ms., Ms., one second. You don't have the floor. I'm gonna give you an opportunity to speak. I want to complete this issue. What we're gonna be able to do is respond to the issues that the residents are bringing up on the call. The goal is for us to serve you and provide you the best service and the best answers as quickly as possible. That's what Director Donald's doing. So I wanted you to be clear that that's what's gonna be happening. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the next.
Uh, can I just say that maybe what Ms. Day is saying, if we had a, maybe a small focus group of residents who could work with staff to make sure we're addressing the issues?
Mr. Slover, that's not what Ms. Day is saying. That's something, if we want to discuss that later, she did not say.
No, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
I think that is what she's saying.
That is what I'm saying.
So that, yes, we can, the pro, that's what we have been doing. So if you follow all of my reports in terms of resident engagement, stakeholder outreach, that is part of that process, uh, to get to this point, been informed by hundreds of residents. I'm happy to sit down with the president's, um, um, council and with other residents to get further ideas or to, or to give them the proposed process of what this would look like and get feedback. But this is not a one-time thing. This is what I've been doing since I've been here. Um, and that has informed my thinking so that we can move forward and to be responsive.
And, uh, was I right?
Yes, Ms. Burbridge, you know, we've met several times too.
She has not been recognized. She's, Ms. Burbridge, you have not, I'm gonna give you an opportunity, but we're gonna move according to the list that we have. Commissioner Hall, you have some time for comments.
I have a question on this issue.
Yes.
Is there any reason a resident could not apply for the job?
No reason at all.
There's no reason at all.
They can apply for any jobs that we have, and there's some that we would, we could structure in that way. I've created ombudsmen before, and we have used people who are actual stakeholders to be the ombudsman. I had a foster youth ombudsman at CFSA. I had a foster parent ombudsman. I'm totally committed to that. Initially, we will start with staff we have that we can repurpose so we can get this going quickly. But yes, the answer is yes. The, well, the answer is no, there's no reason that a resident could not apply once we have an actual position. I think that's a good thing.
Thank you. Alethea?
Um, next is Shontae Hi.
I'm here. Um.
Thank you, Ms. Hi. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Um, good day to everyone. Um, I appreciate the moment, uh, the opportunity to speak today. Um, just want to take a moment to also recognize Ms. Barbara Oops, who kindly makes the phone calls to check in to see how we would like to join the Board of Commissioners meetings every month. Um, excuse me, one second, my phone keeps chiring. To make sure that we will, uh, to make the phone calls to check in to see how we would like to join the Board of Commissioners meetings every month. And also diligently, diligently make sure that we have our links and phone numbers to get connected. I just want to take a moment to thank Ms. Oops and give her the credit she, uh, she so deserves for doing an extremely job well done. And DCHA needs to give Mr. Fashad and Ms. Oops a raise in their pay with the professionalism that they deliver each and every time, and thank you. Uh, Proverbs 13:18, "Poverty and disgrace come to him who ignores instruction, but whomever heeds reproof is honored." I'm here today to speak on the current situation, that is, the offer that was placed on the table for me to move to 614 Morton Street Apartment 21 and my request to obtain Apartment 22 as an extension to my lease for my oldest daughter as my family requires a three-bedroom per DC Municipal Regulation Title 14-5205.3, which regulates the voucher sizes. Quote, "Children of the same gender shall be allocated one bedroom beginning at age 13. If there is a difference of five years or more, children of the same gender shall have separate bedrooms," end quote. Let me remind everyone that my children are ages seven on tomorrow and 22 in March, which attributes to a 14-year age difference. I'd say, no matter where I'm residing, that would account, we would account for a three-bedroom qualification. Now, since my income cannot currently sustain paying for utilities at this time, I cannot afford to take a voucher at the moment. I need ample time to curate my business, generate income, and move towards self-sufficiency in, in order to quote-unquote qualify through any home buying program to purchase a home. I was also just re-elected as Resident Council President, and I do not intend to leave my residence, my remaining residence without representation. Now, since we are down to about 18 families left at Park Morton, with families continuously moving out, there is no reason why this request cannot be granted. I also want to note if DCHA intends to honor my emergency preparedness proposal that former Executive Director Grant, I mean Garrett, signed, or do I need to prepare a new one, thus increasing my proposal's value? This is my way to begin to move towards self-sufficiency and my way to get out from under DC Housing altogether. I feel like Desmond Antu in, um, Amistad, when he said, "Give us us free." Many of us want to be homeowners, to be free, so that we can have true housing security and begin to build generational wealth through equity. Lastly, I want to speak on the vote that happened in October for the 14.
President Ha, President Ha.
I am going to wrap it up. Excuse me? $14.8 million that was obtained for Park Morton. That vote, in my personal opinion, was illegal, and the residents did not, at that time, have any representation because the commissioner's tenures were, had expired. And as a president, I'm asking for a recall, cancellation, or a stop to that paperwork for that October vote. And unless, unless you all give the residents 30%, which is 4.4 million and 4.44 million of that 14.8 million dollars. This is money that would allow for Park Morton Equity to be implemented, going, uh, giving power to our programs, jobs and opportunities for our residents. And this money will also compensate for the pain and suffering, as well as the mental anguish for the families who have endured throughout this process. And lastly, this money will allow for more capacity building for the resident councils, given the necessary supplies we need to work properly and to pay our board members a well-deserved stipend. And I'm putting you on notice today that Jesus will deliver your penance if you do not do right. The comeuppance will be, is going to be real, and you're going to ask yourselves what you did to deserve what you got and how soon you'll forget this decision, and many others like it. And, and you best believe that. And I'm closing with John 15:7. "If you abide in me and my words abide in you, abide in you, ask whatever you wish, and it will be given to you." And I, Ms. Ha, President of the Council at Park Morton, now thank you for your time today.
Thank you, President Ha.
Hello, excuse me, I was cut off. I don't know why. I still have, what, like, I never got my minutes in.
Yep, you, you actually, we, we lost you. It was, um, some reception issue, but you do have two more minutes remaining. Alethea, can we go to, um, Mr. Umar at this moment, before we go to the next public witness?
Sure. Mr. Umar, you, uh, you have the floor. I'll give you another two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, thank you. Well, my, my issue was still was with Ms. Jones and Byron Pew about the falsified documents that I brought to your all attention up here. And, uh, we need something done about it, because first and foremost, I did not approve it. Our bylaws stipulate, and Kenny Council stipulated it when we was on the retreat, that you have to have an end date, a beginning date, and you can end a contract with somebody within 30 days' notice. Now, how did Byron Pew and Ms. Joseph take upon themselves to be able to say that they are going to sign the agreement? You cannot do that, Ms. Joseph. No way in housing or anybody bylaws that you can do that. And if you can show me that, please do, because we had no consent or nothing that went on. If you come up here right now, I mean, come up here tomorrow from 10 to 2, there is nobody in there with Terrific Ink but one person. So you all, whoever Terrific Ink know, you all, somebody need to be going down. I mean, really, man, because y'all totally disrespect these seniors because Terrific Ink's make over $2 million from Row 1, 3, and 5. And nobody's taking notice. Byron Pew, something need to be done about him when it come to all these problems. That's even with the vending machines. The vending machines, C, uh, CSC, they are, they got a lawsuit against them for $197.5 million that nobody in housing even saying nothing about. And they got these ragly vending machine, these ragly washing machines in here, and they under a lawsuit. And I brought that to their attention as well. And every time we brought something to their attention, we had something to back it up with Terrific Ink. We served over 60,000 meals in here during a pandemic. We serve seniors in here every day. Terrific Ink doesn't do anything, and I do not know how Rachel Jones and Byron Pew, and I'm calling y'all out. How did y'all allow them to come back in without a MOU? They should never been in here for you. I don't care if you say you was writing up one, y'all was getting one together. It's illegal. Terrific Ink need to be out here, because one thing for certain, two things for sure, this will hit the media, because these are fraudulent statements that they made. And y'all approved it. They shouldn't be in this building at all. What Kenny Council said when we was on that retreat. And he can quote that again, or what he said about it.
Sir, we've extended your time, so thank you for your comment.
Well, I'd like to get an answer.
Let me, I'm gonna answer, Mr. Umar. I have, when you got cut off, I immediately sent you an email, um, with our executive assistant asking her to schedule a time for you and me to, um, talk and catch up on this. Um, I, and we, we will, um, move forward from that, and I will talk to you soon. Go ahead, Alethea.
Can, can, can I make a comment about this? Because this is.
One second, Commissioner Slover. I was gonna make a comment.
I asked for Carla to schedule that next week, so by the end of the week next week, Mr. Umar, we can have a conversation.
What do you?
I don't want to meet with you by yourself. I would want Ms. Donald and Ms. Reed in there. I don't want to meet with you by yourself. You lie.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Umar.
Mr. Umar, Mr. Umar. One second, one second, Commissioner Slover. Mr. Umar, while I do understand your frustration and how angry you are, I want to make sure that we still, still consider being very respectful to each other. So we're not gonna call people a liar. So this is what I want to say.
This is the truth.
Mr. Umar, give me a second. Let me respond. Next week will not work for myself nor Mrs. Donald. If you would like to have a meeting the following week on the 20th, when we both are here, that's not a problem. Would you accept meeting the week of December the 20th?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we will meet, we will meet collectively the week of December the 20th. Now, I'm gonna yield to you, Commissioner Slover. You had a comment?
So this is, this issue about contracting vending machines, washing machines, service providers. This is a, this is an issue that's lingered around for a really long time. And, um, I thought we had some, um, some, um, clarity coming with the washing and, and vending contracts a couple of years ago, but I guess that never happened.
It did happen. We do have a master contract for the laundry machines. That did happen a few months ago. I'm not sure about the vending machines. And Mr. Umar's talking about service providers. But the vending, the laundry is under a master contract, um, since.
We, we haven't been paid over six months, Ms., uh, Director Donalds.
Hold on, hold on. Can I just, so yeah, so I'm glad to hear that. It'd be great to get an update to the board on it, because it's something we put a lot of work into a couple of years ago, trying to consolidate. So it's nice to see that actually that, that came to be. But I think we need to get a, 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 uh, agency-wide, portfolio-wide policy on this and get it clear so that we don't have these, what I'll call misunderstandings about who's in charge of whom, who gets to sign what contract. It creates, um, it creates conflict and ambiguity, and it, uh, it's really, it really is something we should get a handle on. It sounds like maybe we can use a laundry contract as a model for, 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 for the service contracts and all the rest. So I would, I would, I would encourage the agency to get, get, get their arms around that.
Thank you.
Ms. Paulette Matthews? Ms. Matthews?
Hello?
We can hear you now. You can unmute yourself again. Unmute yourself, Ms. Matthews.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, y'all have given me a headache. My head is pounding. Um, that's for starters. I kind of like lost track of everything because there was just so much going on in this meeting just by y'all starting off and how that took flight. Um, but I heard them talk about seniors and how they have a track. That wasn't even what I was supposed to have been talking about, but here I am, trying to gather everything in this little five minutes I have, when y'all had all that y'all had that gave me a headache. But how do y'all actually track the seniors, is my question? I have five minutes, y'all. Anybody can answer.
Yes, I'm trying to answer. We, we do have a division that trained, that trains, that tracks, um, anyone who has been relocated as a, um, part of a redevelopment. And they do regular reports on exactly where people are. That is a division within our Housing Choice Voucher Department.
So it's not only a problem with communication and a phone call, there's also, um, a problem with communication and receiving mail, or you don't classify me as being a senior, because I'm not in a senior building.
I'm not sure what your question is. Are you saying that you're not?
Well, my question is, what, what my statement is, is I'm a senior. What my question was, is how you track the seniors, okay? And then you said you have a group or a committee or whatever you have, and certain things go out to the seniors. I'm letting you know right now that I have never received anything, and I believe I'm considered to be a senior. The only difference is I don't live in a senior building. Okay, that's, that's what the question is. Okay, that's, that's what the question and the answer is.
Okay, so I think.
Maybe you can answer me of what I was asking you in the beginning. Now, do you understand?
Yes, ma'am, I understand a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have just um communications that go out to seniors in general. Typically, our communications are about what's happening in a particular development. Or there are communications that go out to Housing Choice vouchers, regular communications and updates. So I'm not certain what communication you're referring to, but it's not like a senior communications per se. It's.
Is this Ms. Donaldson speaking?
Ms. Donald, yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's not Nick Donaldson, that's right, you corrected everybody, Ms. Donald.
Yes, thank you.
I'm just talking about in general. There's um, there's a um senior building on this property where I live.
Okay.
I am a senior. I just don't live in the apartment building. Information, if it's given to seniors, to seniors, to seniors, or senior regardless, they're on the property. So I'm trying to figure out if you don't live in the senior building, how do you get the information? How does it get filtered to you? That's the question I'm asking.
Okay, I'm just not sure what information you're, you're with.
Don't, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it at all.
I'm sorry about that.
I'm not gonna waste my time with that. Don't worry about it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on, cause I, I'm not gonna stay with you. Um, I wanna talk about the passing of these resolutions. Um, I sit here, I listen to them, and sometimes I think the proper turn is tabled. Maybe a lot of these things need to be tabled or, or something. Because in my mind, the agenda is already set. And you put us, you put people on board, this is in my mind, so that the agenda can move forward regardless of whether it's right or wrong. My thought process could be wrong, but what I'm seeing is kinda sorta like I could be right. Starting with the Berry Farms situation and those uh properties that came were in the redevelopment before Berry Farms. It's like everything is being moved on monopoly money. Because when we were coming to those meetings, we were under the, we thought that when we was asking every meeting, before you came, Ms. Donaldson, Donald, was there money available? Do you have the money? We never thought in a million years that stuff was being passed for us to be forced out, even though some of those properties were neglected. But we never thought in a million years that to be rushed out, spread it all over the District of Columbia, some are on vouchers, some are still in public house and still can't get the work done. But you figured that you, you, at least you're used to that. And moving with a voucher, now you got a three party situation where stuff still might not get done and you'd be still shaking your head trying to figure out how am I get this done? Or just go ahead and try to do it yourself. But I'm not understanding how y'all keep allowing this stuff to happen and move forward with property after property after property without finishing the first property. Now, my understanding, and I see I was teetotaly wrong, when they came back to do Berry Farms, they wasn't just gonna focus on the senior building and it be finished up. But I'm thinking that the development gonna go up, you hear me? And, and, and it's not gonna take, I know you gotta get permits and all of that type of stuff, but y'all keep talking about.
Sorry to interrupt, your time has been up.
My time will always be up because it's not enough time for all that's going on within this organization, well, within this board and the resolution, and how you get the information at the last minute and you don't have time to talk about nothing. So they need to have a big old meeting at every property with everybody in there to not be saying, oh, I gotta get back with y'all on that information. No, lottie dottie and everybody, so you could get real time answers and real time truth.
Ms. Matthews, we heard you.
I can't tell. You didn't call me either. You didn't call me either. Ms. Donaldson, it's been about three months. You, it's been about two months. I left you an email and all that after you sent your, had somebody call me on the phone and give you a number. I'm done. I'm done. Y'all got.
If you would like for me to give you a call when the meeting is over, I will give you a call today. But your time is up and we wanna be fair to the other residents who would like to testify as well. Alethea, you can call the next person, please. Thank you.
Uh, the next person is Belinda Belk. Belinda Belk, are you able to unmute?
Hello?
Yes, we hear you. Please proceed. You have five minutes.
Okay, good afternoon. Um, I would like to just comment on a lot of the, of, of things that were stated today as far as the um move forward. Um, you know, there's a lot, a lot, a lot, it's a lot to that. And we felt that we wasn't, as we were told that we were going to be heard as an individual, we haven't been heard as an individual. The decisions are being made even though we haven't said anything.
Ms. Belk was, what is your question again?
If.
Ms. Belk? Do you mind, I'm meeting yourself?
Statement.
Okay.
Is Greenleaf want to be heard on the issue of us, of the, of us moving?
Sir, you saying that, are you gonna have a Greenleaf meeting regarding the, the move? Is that your question or your statement?
Thank you, my nerves.
Direct.
You're fucking stupid.
We not acting stupid. We wanna give you the right question, ma'am. And I'm gonna ask again that we be respectful and refrain from using foul language, please. Director Donald, do we have an answer to Ms. Belk question or we would like to follow up? Give me a.
Ms. Belk, I just responded to you to schedule the meeting that you have been requesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alethea?
Uh, the next is Coris Lowry. I don't see Ms. Lowry on. Um, I'll move on to Rosa Burbage. Ms. Burbage, you have five minutes.
Can you all have, hear me? The most challenging position I ever heard was being an informed resident of DC HA. Um, let me just say it from a resident point. You're thieves, you're liars, and you're doing things. And okay, correct me, I'm not a commissioner as of yet. So correct me in my language. What is going on? What is going on? You keep talking about the residence debt. What about the debt that your colleagues, that your board members, the misappropriation of funds that they have taken and used? You know, we as residents need to be heard. You don't want us to be heard. In fact, I always come to these board meetings and unfortunately I didn't have a link, but I have resources. We need something done. Now, let me address something. I don't care about what happened in the past. I wanna talk about what's happening going forward. How will you help the residents? See, you knew DC HA, when we had those presidential elections, you knew a commissioner. You may not have known, but at that time, it should have been a dual election. However, you allowed that to slip by. When I look at the board, I see millions of dollars of income coming in from the board. And all of these people you have, you're surrounded with could not tell you, Commissioner. And I appreciate you, I know what you did for my community. I don't base anything on anything else. With, with all of those plethora of people, why couldn't they tell you that the law was being broken? Um, we should have known as residents so we could have dual a platform. I'm coming for you. See, this where I live and I'm not gonna take it lightly. All of you have conflict of interest. And every time a board member is brought up of this misappropriation of funds, we act like we're gonna sweep it under the rug. Or it hasn't been said. Let's get it right. DC HA is for the hosi, for the residents, and each and every individual there. If you can't get on board, let's get them out. And to my residents, it's not a competition. Come together, vote them out and move on and get some results. I am coming for you. I don't like it, I don't appreciate it. And what you have done to us, the residents, you're stealing money, you're misappropriation funds. I'm not a commissioner yet, so I can tell you, you're thieves and you're liars. And we want some action and a positive. And all the people on there who are agreeing with you, who are not agreeing with the commissioner that has a voice, we're gonna salish you. We're gonna put you in a place you belong. Now, either you get on board or you get out. And I know, Ms. Burbage, you shouldn't said that. I'm feeling good. And last but not least, when you talk about the rent that's deliquing, what about the monies your board member have confiscated? Have misappropriated, have stolen? How will you get that money back and how will it go into your coffers? I appreciate you, Commissioner. You came out to my building. I can't say nothing bad. I don't look in the past, but I'm telling you, you got a bunch of PRs working with you. Cause if your counselor, uh, I don't need to qualify myself, I have degrees. But I'm telling you, if the counselors you had and the people you had at your administration, if they've been on top of the game, you wouldn't have to be all like, I don't know the answer and can someone else answer it? Get it together or leave it alone. We are coming for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burbage.
Uh, next on the list is Linda Brown. Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I'm here.
Please proceed. You have five minutes.
Okay, I just like to finish up with what the caller before me was saying is that what is the accountability? And what are the procedures that we need to follow to hold this board and those, uh, housing authorities accountable? Because they aren't held accountable for anything. They're not held accountable and there's no follow through. Most of the time when we're here, we hear you say what you think we wanna hear. And a lot of it isn't the actual facts. So we don't really have anything to go on and nothing to hold you accountable for. So how do we hold you accountable for what you're saying in these meetings? And what is the procedures and policies for doing that? I'm through.
Thank you. So, thanks for everything. Ms. Brown, thank you for that. If you're asking for the standard of conduct for the board, we're more than share, to share with you how we hold each other accountable. If you want more information and wanna discuss this any further, we're more than help, happy to do so. But I'm start trying to understand exactly what you're saying. How do we hold each other accountable is through the standard of conduct that we have as board members?
I agree, because there are ways in which you hold us accountable for when our rent is due. You follow through, there is that court system and everything else. But how do we hold you accountable when you don't do what is said and what the rules are? How do we follow through on that to help you to move forward and get it done? The talk is easy and we do it all the time. But what are the actions? Your actions are speaking, they're different from what you're saying. So how does that match up? That is what, that is what I'm saying. Yes, we're talking a lot here and there's a lot that's being said. But what is the accountability in action? What does that look like? Cause we say it, but what does it look like? And how does that paperwork get transferred to action? That's what we're, that's what I'm talking about.
So to answer your question again, we are held accountable to several standards. The internal standard is the board of standard of conduct in the organization. Secondly, we also are held accountable by the thirteen council members that you have here in the District of Columbia. If there's more that you're asking for at this time, I don't have any other way to describe to you how we're held accountable other than our own integrity. So at this point, as you can see, if a board member acts un, uh, acts, does not act accordingly, we are not only held accountable by you as a resident, but by those standards that I mentioned and the city council that actually appoint, that actually allowed us to become commissioners. So that's how we're held accountable.
Okay, so let me ask you this then.
Yes, ma'am.
What is, when you make a resolution and that resolution is on paper, how does that transfer? And how does that look when, in the community? Because it doesn't look the same as what you're seeing when you're a people. How does that look to the community that you're dealing with? Because that concerns them. This is how they live every day. So what's on paper? That's what I'm saying. What's on paper, what's your policy? Yes, that is very clear. But your actions or the actions don't back it up, they don't match. That doesn't look the same in the community, the community that you're dealing with. So how does that look? How does that show up? Is what I'm asking you to pay attention to. Is how does that show up in the community that you're dealing with?
I am clear. I'm clear on what you, I'm clear on what you're asking and I'm clear on what you said. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would always suggest you reach out um to the, to the, to the public, uh, to HUD's DC field office. Uh, if you have complaints about the DC Housing Authority and how we're performing. Uh, their phone number is two oh two, two seven five ninety two hundred. There are a number of uh local contacts at that office who uh have oversight over this agency. And I would encourage you to reach out uh to them and express your concerns.
Commissioner Slover. Can you repeat the number? Commissioner Slover, I'm asking you to repeat the telephone number again.
Two oh two, two seven five ninety two hundred. Um, HUD actually has oversight over this agency. Um, and if you have complaints about how we're.
Alethea, could you put that in the chat so that everyone can get that number? Thank you, Commissioner Slover. We can move on to Ms. Alicia Hurst.
I don't think Ms. Hurst is on the line. Next on the list is Pat Malloy.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, before I get to my testimony, I just wanna say, uh, our resident commissioners, thanks for seeing you here. Uh, Commissioner Slover, Commissioner Hoffman.
Hello.
You are the only two commissioners that I really have respect for other than our resident commissioners. Because since I've known you, you've always spoken up for the residents rather than down against the residents. But today I'm here to speak. If you notice in every commissioner meeting, I'm talking about Lincoln Heights. I am sick and tired of our property not being cleaned. Pop, this property haven't been cleaned for two weeks. We have six laborers. Only two laborers really work. And that's Donnie, um, Brooks and um, we call him Man. I forgot what his real name is. Just these laborers need to be shaken up some kind of way. I live on Fifty Place. If man don't come to work, that the place don't get cleaned. The four and five hundred block of Fifty First Street, there are trash cans in the court that haven't been emptied in two weeks. Enough is enough. Director Donald, we had a meeting Monday. We have buildings that's overcome with pozzles, raccoons, whatever you wanna call them. Our apartment building smell of urine and feces not being cleaned on a daily basis. Enough is enough. But these neighbors make all this money and I'm just tired of every month, I'm telling you all the same thing. Also, at the last board of commissioners meeting, I want someone to go back and look at the minutes. I spoke on the nineteen families that received these letters saying they were over income, but when they did the first round. but when they did the first round for the replacement housing, they were eligible. If anyone read the minutes, I was supposed to get a phone call that following week and a response. I never got it. Also, with the election, the third party monitor came out Thursday. They only put the posters on the door of the Resident Council Building. They did not put the posters on the rental office, not at all. Director Donald, Friday the flyers came to the property. The staff allegedly put them out Monday. I overheard a conversation. They said, the union told them they did not have to put out flyers. That's not in their job description. I brought this up before. You allowing your staff to put out flyers that go in the dumpster? We got them on Fifty Place because Donnie, the laborer, he didn't refuse to put them out. He put them out on Fifty Place. So I know the people on my street got them. I don't know by anywhere else on the property. I don't believe, no one is holding anybody accountable. I'm tired of asking this property to be clean. I am really tired. I'm asking you to remove these five, four labels, whoever they are, except the two that I want, that needs to stay on the property. We have shootings every single day. We as residents live here in fear. They work here and don't wanna do the work. So our property go unclean. Do you all feel that it's right? We are one of the property, one of the ten properties that's supposed to be in a settlement to be clean every day. I don't feel that I need to call Kyle Racine for him to send someone here to look at our property. I'm also an AMC commissioner. There's a lot of problems that I can bring to the housing authority, but I don't wanna do it. Remove these laborers from Lincoln Heights, put someone over here to wanna work. Thank you.
Ms. Malloy, hi. I do ones, I, I'm, I'm taking notes on things that you've said. And just from Monday's meeting, when that issue about the possums came up, we, now you know, we have a, our wildlife, um, rodent specialist will be out tomorrow. They're already coming out there and follow up to that, because that was the first time that I had heard of that. I know you said they complained before. I'm following up on the flyers because you, you were in that meeting with the third party monitor and said, what didn't happen last time, so I'm disappointed, but it's not too late since we're just getting that started. So thanks for letting us know. And, um, there are a few other things that we'll follow up from, uh, Monday night's meeting that are in.
Not all of that. With the, uh, transformation, we, I'm signing, we are gonna have, uh, a confirmation meeting tomorrow to clear up some concerns that I had regard to the transformation plan. So.
Okay.
We did reach back, our meeting is tomorrow. But my main concern is, I want Lincoln Heights clean. I'm tired of hearing that what those laborers don't wanna do. They do more complaining than I do. They tell they, whoever, what they not gonna clean. When you let me hear you say that, I know you don't care. So I would rather for them to be gone, except the two laborers, Roger Ballard and Donnie Brooks. They're the only two that actually does anything on this property and it's wrong. And I hate to tell you, the laborers that I'm talking about comes from your ATP program and somewhat, somewhere else. But the bottom line is, if you don't wanna clean the property, why you sit in the maintenance shop all day and don't do no work? Oh, no, it ain't gonna work.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Malloy. We'll continue talking.
Alethea? I believe Ms. Alicia Hurst was having difficulties. Ms. Hurst, are you on the line? Alicia Hurst?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you. You have five minutes. Please proceed.
Sure. Okay, um, I'm just gonna say this quickly. I wanted to come on, uh, basically about the personal issue that I was having in my unit. Um, I was in there with my family. Um, I put in the service request as I was supposed to do. The office from there was supposed to have a maintenance tech come. The maintenance tech cooked three days to come and my whole unit was flooded. The only thing that he did for my unit was to cut the carpet and put in blow fans. And we had to sit almost six days with blow fans and in a wet unit. Uh, besides that, if I never escalated, you know, and sent the email to the corporate office, I was never able to be displaced. So since I said that and I tapped some people on there, that's when he decided to displace us. It started from just being us displaced for a week. It turned into almost four and a half months of being displaced into a vacant that was actually deemed by DCRA to be, um, shut down. And DCRA offered to put us in a hotel, which they provided. But DCHA, I kept on reaching out to DCHA every single time. And even to the point that I had to go reach out to the city council. That's how I got everything moved where they were able to go ahead and rush me and put me in a brand new profit. But besides that, all the rent that I was supposed to be paying, it was never supposed to be even, um, I was never supposed to owe because I had zero income at the time. I've contacted DCHA to, um, ask them and let them know what's going on. Why am I still receiving the papers that I owed in liquid rent if my income is at zero? I still, you know, I submitted all the paperwork I was supposed to to verify that I was no longer receiving cash and that my rich should have changed. So those are the issues that I was having. And I tried to work with DCHA on this and I've contacted them. I've never got no response. Only thing I've got was somebody will call me back, but nobody has ever called me back. So the only reason why I got things moving was upon myself. Besides all that, I wanna move to a different issue too. So I don't know if someone can meet me with or about this issue, about what goes on, because the biggest thing that I'm concerned, all of my stuff with seventy-five percent of my items was damaged, you know? And I'm a mother of five children. So I have to start back and try to get all my stuff that was damaged because the property management, they don't wanna do nothing about this stuff. And nobody wants the things to help me with this stuff. So I have to resort to resources out here, how to get free furniture or how to get things, you know, that, you know, so I can refill my house again, so we're not sleeping on the floor. So I don't know if somebody can reach out to me to help me out and advise me on what I need to do.
Ms. Hurst, this is Rachel Joseph. I will happily reach out to you and, um, trying to, try to understand the, um, situation.
Okay, uh, you have my contact number?
I do have your contact number.
Okay, okay, Ms. Rachel Joseph, okay. Also, do I have another? Yes, I do. I have another couple of minutes. I wanted to bring this up also. Uh, this is awful, like off the wall, has nothing really to do with me. But I think with housing, I don't know as far as you all having a compliance department or not, but there's a lot of properties that you all provide subsidies for the residents and they're not in compliance with a lot of things. I've seen offhand that people are being moved in before the inspection is done. And the property collects that. Then I see the high rent. If, if DCHA is providing DC residents with low income rent, then why is it that properties are able to hike up the rent just to make it max so they can get that extra dollar? So for example, if they know that, well, based on the market of the five properties all around them, or two bedrooms and they're leasing at fifteen hundred, but they know that DCHA is gonna pay the highest rent, they'll mark it all the way up to three thousand versus the fifteen hundred. So is anybody, you know, does audit or the, you know, is there a compliance department within DCHA that actually monitors these properties for hiking up rent because they're receiving, you know, they're receiving a subsidy from you all?
There, we do have an internal audit and compliance department, Ms. Hurst, which I can tell you about when we connect. Um, and we are working on, um, the issue of ensuring that there is rent reasonableness across the board for our, um, voucher participants.
Okay, yeah, if we could talk about that, because I have signatures for almost three hundred residents. And this comes across the board from six different properties. And all of them are upset because they actually didn't even know, happened to even know that they were being charged as much as they did. And once that subsidy ended, then they're left with what, having to be responsible for so much rent that they didn't even know that they responsible for.
Okay, I'm reaching out to you right now, Ms. Hurst, to schedule a time to talk.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then also, can I say this real quick? Mr. Bill and Ms. Ann, I appreciate you all, how you all go to bat. And not only that, but you keep these people accountable. And I appreciate everything that you have said on this meeting, because that's what it's about. It's not about bashing anyone or disrespecting anyone, you know? But I appreciate that you're giving them accountable and asking the questions that we know that we don't have the time to ask.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you, everyone.
As, as a follow up to that, uh, intro, uh, Director Donald, when are you gonna, when are you gonna report out to us the rent reasonableness process that you told us sixty days ago you would tell us in thirty days? And so I know we, there's a lot going on, but it's a really important element.
I have not take, I'm not taking my eye off of that, Commissioner. The, um, program or the, um, algorithm was built on November seventh to be tested out so that we could look at all of the properties to see what the delta would be in terms of the tool and the, um, the new rent under rent reasonableness guidelines. Um, I asked the team to look, to enter in all of the properties, um, that are coming up for recertification in the first quarter. What we're trying to do, what I'm trying to do is to get a handle on what is the difference is gonna be? Is it gonna be a swing of a few hundred dollars per month? Is it gonna be a nominal amount? Just to see the impact so that we can roll this out in a fair way. We're pretty close to, in fact, the, that report is supposed to come to me on Friday, this Friday. And so then we can look at it and determine, um, how to implement it, um, more than, so I don't, I don't wanna say, but more than likely it will be, um, for all new, um, leases and at recertification. But again, I'm gonna see what the impact is so that we can communicate to landlords and, um, be clear with them about, um, when those adjustments will be made. I did a presentation to the Small Landlords Association, um, that's not the exact name, in, um, October to give them a heads up. And we do have materials that we're, we're putting so that we can communicate that. So that's where we are. It's still doing the analysis, um, and it, so I have not taken my eyes off of it. It's just the data is not there to determine the best way to go forward.
I, I appreciate that, but I don't wanna unpack what I just heard. Um, um, I, I would first say I would offer that our future voucher funding is probably very much hinged on, uh, how much we can extract out of this rent reasonable thing. So it's obviously critically important to a lot of projects as to how this is rolled out. My guess is it's thirty plus million dollars that we're talking about. Um, that's how much the, that we dropped in terms of revenue once we went to this rent increase. And so what I, what I heard is it, is the board gonna be participatory in your decision as to how it's rolled out? Or are you gonna make that decision on your own?
Um, no, I see that as, as, as an executive decision. It's about implementing the new tool. Um, I will be, I will brief the board and if you have recommendations in terms of how it's gonna be implemented, I'll take that under consideration. But I don't see anywhere near thirty million dollars. It's not, um, I mean, if we, I saw one report that is, I think was overestimated, that looked a, anywhere between three and ten million, um, once it's annualized and done for every property. But that has to be implemented over a period of time. But so I'm happy to sit with you, because I know you have thought about this more, uh, individually than any other board member, and share the data and go through that. And certainly I'll do that with the whole board. But I'd like to understand the basis for your projections and show you what we have as well.
My, my projection's based on the fact that, that we had a thirty million dollar swing in two years, once we implemented the one hundred seventy-five percent of prior market rent. And so it's a swag.
I have a report on that too.
It's all right. I, I presented that, I presented that about, right when you came on board, I presented all those numbers.
Okay, I have a report on that too, that shows it over years and I don't see anything near that high, but happy to take a look. And yes, we are, we are, we will be moving forward. But if there are significant swings, just to, just, you know, if, if, if someone is getting two thousand dollars a month rent and then the rent reasonableness tool says it really should be fifteen hundred, the, and, you know, there's a question of how soon, how quickly do we implement that? Is it fair to do that to go immediately the next month? Many of our landlords are very small landlords that have one or two properties. So there are a lot of implications and, um, we wanna be, do this in a fair and transparent way.
That's why your swing is three to ten million, I guess is what I'm saying.
Probably.
If, if I may, um, you said that you presented some information to the small landlords. May the commission see those?
It was general information that we have a, we're gonna be implementing a new tool around rent reasonableness so that we can right size the rent. So it was a, a heads up that we're going to be implementing this and likely to start in the, um, first quarter of next year, but that we're still gathering the data and that we will come back to them with some analysis so that they will see what the implications are. That's all. So it was a, it was a present.
There was no document?
No.
No document or slide deck?
No, no, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have one question, or I may have a recommendation. I wanna know whether or not when we, uh, recruit HCBP landlords in the, um, Andrea's office, why don't we have a paralegal to check and see whether or not these landlords already have, how many, um, cases they already have in court with private tenants versus our tenants? And how often are the landlords taking hardship petition on our residents? And whether or not HCBP residents know that they can pay their rent to the court? A lot of, a lot of HCB residents do not realize, just because they have a voucher and they're in a private landlord's dwelling, that they can't take them to court for housing code violations. And if so, how many, how many HCB residents have done just that? That should also be reported to the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Gossery. We have, um, five more non-resident testimonies and I'm gonna ask if we can get through those commissioners and then we can hold our comments till the end, please. Alethea, you can start the list.
Okay, um, and a reminder, our non-residents have three minutes. Um, Chris Williams.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. My name is Chris Williams. I am a community leader in Southwest. Uh, me and my friends are in Greenleaf, and so I'd like to go through the Greenleaf redevelopment. Uh, the proposal, uh, required that the respondents demonstrate the financial capacity and resources to execute a redevelopment plan. Yet residents were told that preservation of Greenleaf Senior was needed in order to make the, uh, redevelopment more financially viable. Uh, Greenleaf, uh, DCHA has also proceeded with, um, a relocation plan in effect, uh, which is really getting around HUD policy that require that any redevelopment, relocation plan as a part of redevelopment plan has to go to HUD for approval. Uh, that was not done and really, uh, poses, uh, many legal issues, uh, for, uh, DCHA going forward. Uh, there is no built site, uh, yet identified for Greenleaf. Uh, yet we have in the request for, uh, proposals that, quote, "The site will be developed in phases in order to achieve the goal of build first." Uh, there is no public documentation with respect to how each of the developers, uh, were scored, uh, yet we see major deviation from the requirements of the RFP. Uh, for example, uh, we have at least one building that will be preserved that is Greenleaf Senior, yet no plan submitted as a part of the formal review process included preservation of current buildings. Also, the, uh, Housing Authority identified in the RFP that, quote, "All existing properties on the site were delivered in nineteen fifty-nine and are physically obsolete." Uh, yet again, we're seeing preservation of at least one building in Greenleaf, uh, which makes that statement false. Uh, with the redevelopment, uh, plan as well in the RFP, there was an effort to incorporate a human services delivery system, uh, that human services delivery system to meet the needs of new, uh, residents and current residents has not yet been fully disclosed to residents, much less, uh, the public. Uh, we know that there are ongoing investigations with respect to, um, former, um, uh, board members and former, uh, employees at DCHA. Uh, and, uh, it really raises the question whether or not Greenleaf redevelopment should move forward. It was pointed out today that the, uh, vote to extend, uh, the negotiation for the MAD, uh, really, uh, ran against the, uh, previous board vote in twenty twenty that, uh, no extensions would be offered for the Greenleaf redevelopment. I'd also like to point out that, uh, there are several, uh, topics in this process that have not, uh, yet been given the light of day. Uh, one has to do with the Affordable Housing, uh, Land Covenant at Greenleaf. One has to do with the Affordable Housing Land Covenant at Greenleaf. This is unique among public housing properties in Washington DC because this is in addition to the Declaration of Trust that exists on the Greenleaf land. I'd also like to point out that the comprehensive plan is not really discussed at all with respect to Greenleaf redevelopment. It really calls for a build first strategy. It also says that.
30 seconds remaining, sir.
Should, it also says that the redevelopments in Southwest should, quote, "Remain an exemplary model of equity and inclusion." And, and with the proposal that we are given, we're seeing overwhelming market rate units. Of course, many of these, over 100 of these include market rate townhouses. So I think you all probably need to start over, otherwise you're going to get in a lot of legal trouble.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Could someone address that issue about the affordable covenant? Is that an existing covenant on the land?
We'd have to review it.
Correct. Look it up for yourself.
Is that an existing covenant that you're?
It is. You can, it is a part of the deed for the land. You can look it up for yourself in the city's records. It's free online, accessible to the public.
I'd love to get some line of sight into that from the agency as to whether that's something we are A, aware of and B, has any impact on what we can and can't do with the property specifically around the now disclosed sale element.
So there's lots of covenants and we do title work as a part of this process and we will review any covenants in place. There's HUD covenants as well, DOT.
But as a matter of policy, the city.
I was speaking just now. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. Your time is up.
That was Andrea, pal.
That was Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alethia. Please move on to Daniel.
Yes, Mr. Del Pelago.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Daniel Del Pelago with Empower DC. I've got a couple of points and a couple of questions. I wanted to raise up, and I know Ms. Joseph responded to this in the chat, but I wanted to put on the record that these resolutions are coming up, the agendas are actually being posted way too late for residents to actively engage residents and community members like Mr. Williams on these decisions. You know, you're supposed to register 24 hours before the meeting. The agendas aren't, come up right around that same time, about a day before the meetings. So it's very hard for people who are directly affected by these issues to speak on these very specific agenda issues. I was able to help Ms. Belk and Ms. Brown register because I asked Director Donald at a previous meeting if Greenleaf was actually on the agenda. And she, she said, yeah. So, you know, I made sure to say, "Register these folks, please, for the Greenleaf." So that really needs to, to happen. I, I know that that is a cause of COVID and will go away when we're back in person. But if we're gonna continue these, something needs to happen to give residents more of a lead time to know what they can speak on. Regarding the Berry Farm resolution, and I know there's been an opinion, legal opinion on this past before, but I read on here the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development has advised that it wishes to pursue NCI LRSP project-based operating subsidy for the 33 replacement units in the Berry Farm Building 1B project. It just is very curious to me still that an agency that sits on this board is able to request these monies, call for a vote, and then vote on these very same resolutions. I will leave that at that because as I've mentioned, that there's been in, we've been told that that is fine, but it still seems to be very problematic in my opinion and in many of the residents I speak to opinion. The elections are coming up very, very fast. I've spoken to several residents, presidents of properties who are very concerned about having to be out there in the cold, in the, you know, it gets dark very fast. People have to get, you know, if you're running for an ad larceny, you have to get 300 signatures. You know, 40 of which for, only from your property or from other properties, you have to get. So that's gonna be very, very hard for folks to do. So I'm flagging that as a concern for many residents, especially for somebody who may be disabled or a senior to get around town to collect enough signatures to actually have a chance at running on this board. I wanted to flag for this board that this year we did not see anything, any resolutions put forth around a right of return. I challenge this board to take that on this coming year as developments come to light, as people get displaced from their properties. We need something stronger than Resolution 1606 that spells out the actual right of return. We may, may like it, we may not, but something needs to happen. So let me leave that with the board. Lastly, I wanted to say welcome to Commissioner Skinner to the board. Commissioner Skinner, I saw your confirmation hearing with the council. In your hearing, you said you would not make decisions unless you were.
Daniel, your time has been up over a minute ago. I was being gracious to you. But your actual time is up, sir, and we do have several other justices.
Sure, I will, I just wanted to flag, Mr. Skinner, I hope you did have enough information to vote on these four resolutions. You voted yes.
Thank you.
It seemed really.
Thank you, Daniel. I want to respond to you. The resolutions are posted no later than 48 hours before the meeting. This one was posted last, I'm speaking, Commissioner Hoffman. This one was posted on last Friday. So to state that that's not enough time, we've actually was able to post this on last Friday. So residents had an opportunity to review. So just wanted to make a correction for the record that according to the board elections and government accountability, we are within the right to post at the time that we have. So thank you.
I was checking since last week, the only, the time I saw.
It's okay, Daniel, Daniel. Is that the person?
Thank you, thank you. It wasn't posted, Daniel. It was not posted. Thank you. We're moving forward. Alethia?
The next on the list is Suprema Lowry Dowdy. Ms. Dowdy on the line. I see her name on the list here on the WebEx. Is she able to unmute herself? Okay, let's move to Janet Phoenix. Janet Phoenix. Okay, last on the list we have is William Jordan. Mr. Jordan, you have three minutes.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. William Jordan. I'm a member of the Park Morton Equity Team. I just wanted to chime in and share some information from the last few weeks. So the zoning commission heard our case for Park Morton. And interesting enough, the zoning commission said that it shouldn't and that Park Morton site and the Bruce Monroe site have nothing to do with each other. But your resolution always tie the two sites together. The zoning commission says the, how this project affects the residents doesn't matter to them. Yet, all the funding from this project through Denpad basically ties what the zoning commission thinks to how the project is gonna turn out. So what you have is a situation is the systems have basically made the residents of Park Morton invisible in this process because we hide behind zoning rulings and financing and forget the needs of residents. Also wanted to remind everybody, the Park Morton New Communities Project is a $2.48 million project. The developer will collect almost $30 million in development fees from this project. The project has a $97 million funding gap minus whatever Denpad put in 30 something million in this last budget year. So the residents' lives are depending on a project that's not fully funded. We can see from the previous projects that when you do them in phases, you have no idea whether the second phase or the third phase is gonna happen. And then finally, I wanted to speak to and actually ask a question. So Denpad is gonna give the housing authority approximately $14.8 million as a grant. They're gonna in turn give that money to the developer to basically demolish the place. And so I want to know, how is that gonna happen legally? What's the accountability for grant money coming to here that then just gets handed over to the developer? The developer will take a fee off of the top of that money and put it in their pocket. And I still don't know what the residents are gonna get out of that. We don't have any Section 3 agreements. We don't have any business agreements. We don't have anything going to make me think that that $14.8 million will improve the status, the condition, and provide any equity position for our residents. So I keep close on this. We ask for equity for the residents so that their position means something. The project could accommodate equity for residents and we keep being told it can't happen and it's just absolutely ridiculous. It's gotta happen or it doesn't count. The vote doesn't count. Nothing counts unless you have money in this society, unless you have equity in this society. And the value of the land has doubled since this project started and the developer is gonna pocket that doubling of land value because the project is structured on the old land values. So, but anyway, can you please explain that $14.8 million and how residents can get their share of that money? Thank you.
It's a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. That concludes our public testimony.
No one's gonna answer that question?
No, they can't. They can't answer it and they mute all of us. I couldn't put any questions in the chat.
That's how they do it though. They rushing to get home. That's how they.
But, let, you can't mute me. I'm coming for you. You're stealing your life.
They ready to go home. Our lives don't matter.
And they want, it's like the gesso dude, it's like the, the ladder.
Miss Verbitz, Miss Verbitz, I gave you enough time to speak. I'm asking you now to respect.
Damn, our lives really don't matter.
And don't, you muted us. You would not let me put anything in the chat, but I'm telling you, I'm coming for you.
You're very rude and disrespectful and I'm asking you to please stop. If you want to talk to me directly, you can.
Do we have a process in place?
Yeah, I need to answer questions.
Why would I speak to you directly when you can't even pay your bills? Come on, Will.
You can still speak to me directly. I'm going to end this meeting. The meeting is.
Y'all need to take out this time to listen to the residents that y'all blame that y'all are serving.
Tailed Wednesday, January 12th, 2022 at 1:00 PM. The information will be posted according on our WebEx. We will continue to meet on the WebEx. You all have a happy holiday.
You deserve the people like you say you do when you take the chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Slow, don't look, so, don't look like that. We know you support us. We know you are, Commissioner Hoffman, support us. The Lord have mercy.